Ali, can I start?
Yes.
Call the meeting to order. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the citizens of this republic, and to the stand of obligation under one indivisible liberty and justice. Ali, could you please read in the certification for plans?
The time and date of location of this meeting and public access is posted on the bulletin of the town of Lake Hurley, 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Runberger. Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Pedersen.
Here.
Mr. Plankton.
Here.
Mr. Hertzel.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Mrs. Grappos.
Here.
Mr. Tittler.
Okay, confirmation, recording status?
Yes, thank you.
Swearing of professionals?
State your name for reference, please. Please, for the purposes of the reception, we will do your number here.
Yes. Okay, let's go through the manualizations. Shh. Every, please be quiet. Would like to finish the agenda today.
Number of resolutions that shouldn't have been passed in our last meeting, but we didn't have a forum. The first is SP 2206, Congregation Denver-Schuldenberg, this is a correcting resolution for our major site plan.
Ali, can I just ask you if you could vote on them?
Cannot vote Mr. Hertzel and Mrs. Grappos.
Okay, on all of them?
No, just on this first one.
Okay.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, no? Okay, approved.
SP 2176, denial of a minor subdivision, all can vote.
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No? Okay, approved.
SP 2220, crime holdings, major site plan, all can vote.
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any nays? No?
SP 2226, Benos DeBora, major site plan, all can vote.
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No? Approved.
SP 1957A, extension of a major site plan, all can vote except Mr. Grappos.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No?
SP 2214, I'm going to recommend that we hold on. I was still getting emails back and forth from Ms. Donato, who had represented objectors at the meeting, so I prefer to just table that until further notice.
Okay, it's a nice meeting. Do we need a motion there, now?
I don't think so. Typically, John says that resolutions are just administrative.
What kind of emails? Issues with the resolution?
Yeah, they were still working out. There was a number of conditions that were agreed to at the meeting.
Please, please shut all the cell phones.
Ms. Donato had made some recommendations for revisions to the resolution. John's office made those revisions. It went back to Ms. Weinstein, who represented the applicant, and she felt that some of those conditions actually had not been testified to, so they were still just tweaking those final provisions.
They should come back to here, now. If they can't agree.
I think they can agree. I think it's just that we've run out of time, and they've been trying to do it by their own.
We'd have a person I could, it takes impeccable minutes, so if they want to check the minutes, they could always do that.
All your one person talks to the class.
I don't think there was a disagreement. I think there was just a lag in communication in the files. SP 2222 for Saul Gray, all can vote besides Mr. Grappos.
Motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No? Approved. Number eight?
SP 2150A, this is an amended major site plan and minor subdivision for Wawa. I have all besides Mr. Grappos, and that'll be the same for the rest of the resolution.
Motion?
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Okay, next.
SD 2181, major subdivision for two lots.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, no nays? Okay, approved.
SD 2187, mural holdings, minor subdivision.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No? Okay, approved.
And SD 2192, Clear Drive LLC, this is a denial of a minor subdivision.
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No? Okay, approved. Ali, is there any changes to the agenda today?
Uh, yes. First, first up is item number one, SD 2182. I received an email late this afternoon. On SD 2182, BBC Capital, I received an email late this afternoon, which I attempted to forward to Mr. Reicher, who I knew was a neighbor on the application. Ms. Weinstein indicated that the applicant is withdrawing the application without prejudice, so at this time, there will be no hearing on 2182. If they want to come back for any future subdivision, they'd have to make a brand-new application and start from scratch, because they've completely withdrawn that application.
So new notices will come out if anything comes back?
If they.
If they come back?
If they come back, okay.
The notices came out, certified email, the postman dropped it in everybody's mailbox. It was one of those notices, he didn't give me details. I talked to him, because the guardian of the law.
Okay, I'm sorry, but the time is not being heard, to your benefit.
So, so question is this, though, as you know, I was in zoning, I was in, I was in your office twice today.
Yes.
At 2:00, well, the second time was after 2:00 in the afternoon. So...
They just called it?
Well, at this point, it's not that they, it's not that they pushed it off for a future meeting. They've completely withdrawn the application. There is no application.
Oh, okay.
It is, it is gone. If they wanted to subdivide the property, they would have to come in with brand-new paperwork, maps, application fees, and start from scratch.
And new notices. You'll be noticed. Right now, this is off the table.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have to make an announcement there?
Nope, it's withdrawn, I don't think it needs to be. Uh, we do have a number of items at the end of the agenda, listed eight through 12, which have requested to carry, and it has been noted on the agenda since yesterday as such. Number eight, SP 2224, Congregation Sapmar. They've requested to carry until further notice, so I don't believe any announcements need to be made on that.
Ali, I have a question. A few of these applications have been adjourned a few times already.
Yes.
Tabled a few times.
Yes.
What's the limit till we have to renotice?
It seems to be two or three.
The board typically goes with two or three. All of these, except for one, will be providing new notice, so I was not concerned with that on those applications.
Okay.
Number nine, SP 2227, Yerick, has only been carried once. This is in the industrial park, it's warehouse buildings. They're requesting to carry because they are working with the neighbors, and I believe the industrial permission to revise the plans. They are looking at June 20th, so that they have enough time to revise the plans and get everything correctly shown before coming before the board. So that's the one that I would recommend that we provide the legal announcement, unless the board wants it.
Do we need a motion?
I think we do typically take at least an all-in-favor for carrying to June 20th.
Okay, we have a motion to move number nine.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No? Okay, so it'll be at June 20th?
Yes.
Okay, you can make an announcement, Mike, please, number nine.
But they're going to provide notice, right?
Not the most.
Did you say that?
That's the only one that I was recommending that we provide the announcement.
Oh, announcement, I'm sorry.
Unless the board wants notice.
Okay.
Number nine, SP 2227.
Ladies and gentlemen, item number nine on tonight's agenda, application SP 2227, submitted by Majorita Airport Road, is to be carried. A new date, hearing will be June 20, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. When this call is further noted.
And anybody here from number eight through 12, besides number nine, there will be new notices, and will not be here tonight. Okay. Okay, Ali, so let's continue. Are we doing the ordinance first?
Yes, we're looking at the Transportation Improvement Districts impact fees. So Transportation Improvement Districts 1 and 2 has been created some time about, however, the committee had never formally adopted what those fees would be. You should find it in the staff of your correspondence. So this is simply the key schedule that's proposed to go along with those two improvement districts. There's some detailed information regarding number of trips, cost per trip, and what those fees per unit will be. I trust that the committee has reviewed this in depth, and that it has been prepared by TNM, who created the Transportation Improvement District ordinance. But if you have further questions, I'm sure we can defer to the committee, because it doesn't look like anyone is scared to this.
Terry, can you explain, these costs are, that's what the actual cost that we feel that they should contribute?
We're not involved with this term.
Right.
As I understand it, the purpose of the impact fees on developers is to provide all kinds of improvements that have to be done, is to have this ordinance in place when someone comes in and their future traffic is going to contribute a percentage towards the need for that improvement. There's a mechanism that they can be built upon.
It's not actual cost. It's just a percentage what they have to chip into it.
These are the capital fees, they will be, they will be responsible for a percentage based upon the impact.
Okay.
We tried getting the impact last time, it's just we couldn't hold them to anything, and this gives us something to attach it to? Terry, is that what?
Yes, yes.
And who's going to calculate these fees? Are you going to calculate, is the planning board engineer going to calculate these fees, or?
I don't know how the order is structured yet.
It is structured to be in Chapter 18, so I would imagine the same way that Terry, you can calculate the stormwater fees and include that in his resolution compliance reviews, he could calculate those fees, and we would make sure that those are collected before...
It's not deemed complete until these fees are collected.
Well, no.
It's not going to be signed off. In other words, you would go through the application process.
Right.
If the board acts favorably in the compliance phase, prior to what's sudden off and starting construction, you would have the fees calculated.
But who calculates the number of trips? Is the applicant do that, or do you do that?
It sounds like I haven't had a chance to.
Probably the applicant does it, maybe he reviews it?
I would imagine we're going to get information from the applicant's consultants, where they're going to review it, where they're going to accept it, or say that would be modified, or based upon that information, there are probably formulas that we are going to use and say, okay, based upon the data and based upon the cost of the improvements needed, that's going to be the fee. I'm not 100% sure at this time, but that's what I think is going to happen.
Because it's cost per trip. So you're not, you don't have an exact amount what it's going to cost?
This is not really in the backside, it's typically not.
I think if you look at the last, the last page, it indicates what the trip per unit, the cost per trip calculation is going to be. So for example, for a single family detached, it's going to be .77 per unit, so then you would cross-reference that with the area that they're in on the cost share analysis page, where it has cost per trip, for example, in the Cross Prospect Street Court, it's $665 per trip. So all of that has been calculated by TNM based off of the anticipated infrastructure improvements needed, and then balanced against the number of anticipated units, and then turned into a calculation to spread that among the number of anticipated units.
The question?
Yes.
Who did you say generates this information that is on the table?
TNM is the township planner that prepares the original study that recommended Transportation Improvement District.
The township planner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not 100%, I'm not 100% sure, but I think major may have also been involved.
Who?
Major consulting is doing the traffic work in the township.
I see.
They may have been involved.
Thank you.
John, John, are you okay with it?
Yeah, sure. I'm curious.
It's not going to be per trip, so you're...
So what can we figure out approximately from?
You don't have an exact...
So let's say you're developing in a cross Prospect Street Court, one single-family detached house, it's going to be .77 times $665, which is those first two rows on the last two pages.
You have two charts on the back, that's what that...
Yes, so in other words, it depends what, it depends what development area you're in, which is going to determine what your cost per trip is.
Right.
Correct.
Depending on the improvements in that particular area.
And that is separated that way, because the traffic improvements are split up into, well, this area needs traffic aid X, Y, Z, this area needs widening, so it is based off of specific anticipated improvements.
Yeah, but how do you know how many trips are going to be there every day?
The TNM did calculations based off of, I assume, the current zoning and the anticipated development that's coming to that area.
So is that like $500 impact fee per unit?
Sounds like for a single-family...
I'm sorry. So that's around $500 per?
It sounds like to me, in a single, for a single-family home in the Cross Prospect Street Court, yes, that'd be about $500 per...
For that particular area, that may vary depending upon the area.
So ten homes would be $500.
That's a joke.
Mr. Kir, could you stop the conference going on?
Shh. Excuse me, please take your conversations outside, we cannot hear.
$500 is, is a joke. It's nothing where it needs to be.
For one house?
One house.
Well, it, it, it depends what development area you're in, so in other words, there were, there were improvement, there were improvements that were calculated depending on what area you're in. So for example, if you're in the Vine Street Extension area, your, your cost per trip is going to be more than $500 for a single-family detached house, so it depends where you are.
The most is Route 9.
Yeah, so if you're in the Oak Street Board, you know, it, so it all depends on where you are, really, which, you know, so it's not, it's not like $500 across the board, it's...
The original impact fees of 15,000 to 20,000 per unit that we discussed a couple few years ago, it's nothing close to what...
This, this sounds like it's a lot fairer, it sounds like they're putting a budget together for the street and the drainage, and then that cost is required.
Right. I think what's actually good about this is that the improved, the costs collected for the particular areas are going to stay in that area. I mean, it seems to be like that's, that's the intent of this, meaning that instead of just collecting a flat fee for every house around town and not knowing where the money's going to go, you're going to collect, you're going to collect certain fees for particular areas, and the idea is ensuing, and that's what it looks like, the money's going to be dedicated for that area, so at least you know where it's going.
There's only one thing, the cost of improvements will be much more than what you're collecting.
Well, I, you know, I can only, I can only, I can only assume that TNM associates did their work, I don't know.
Can I say something? Just a second.
One second, one second. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay. I, I think it's a, it's a good start, I don't know if it's enough, but it's definitely a good start, but the fees. Okay, we'll not in the public.
Just a second, usually, I don't know if you opened this up usually to the public, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Yeah.
The only question that I have is, usually when you have an ordinance, they're not claiming afterwards that the planning board didn't understand the exact ordinance, they usually have the professional themselves that have put together the ordinance come down, explain it to the board. Why did the township not feel important that TNM associates should be over here, to be able to explain to the board, and not everything should be assumed that they do the right thing, and they should explain it to the board? Like this, when it gets to the township committee, they think the planning board recommended it.
Because we have Ali over here who will explain it.
But she said she assumed a lot of stuff that they did.
We could certainly put this to the May 23 meeting if the board wants an additional presentation on it. It looks like the committee is anticipating to act on it for second reading on June 8, so May 23 would still be in advance of that meeting. Unless the board's comfortable with it as is.
What do you feel?
I'd like somebody to come down and tell us what's going on.
Was TNM here once? I think they were here once, before they did the first reading.
Not on this one.
Not on this one? On a previous version?
John, should we vote on it now, or should we wait till TNM come down?
Well, if they got time to come down before the second reading, what's that then?
Then you feel, then you feel more comfortable?
Yeah.
And TNM was not here already?
I don't remember.
I remember Stan Sileka here explaining the cost per trip, was that a previous version?
I think it was, it was a different chart, at least visually, I know this one looks different than the last one.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now let's leave for May 23.
You had the ordinance a couple of years ago, I don't think the actual formulas were there.
I think the formulas may have come up, and then there was concern that the Oak Street was being double-built. So they may have been modified.
Okay, so can we leave it for May 23?
Yep.
Do we need a motion to move it to May 23?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you, next.
The next correspondence item is SP 2221A, the congregation vice director, Terry Oded. There was the original restriction in the reservation against permitting temporary trailers. The applicant is here before you to request to lift that restriction, and I believe there's also correspondence, Mr. Hertzel, for you from the brick anyway, so it would be regarding this correspondence request.
I saw, I didn't read it yet.
Excuse me, would you kindly repeat your recommendation on previous ordinance, because...
We're going to hold it for May 23, and so we can have someone from TNM come and explain the reservation.
Thank you, speaker.
One second. Terry, do you have any comments?
He didn't check into that beforehand, so he just, off the top of his head, said what he was thinking, that he intended. And any guy, his building professionals involved, they looked at the building, and they said that putting the trailer in...
Brian, do you have to be sworn in?
I don't know.
Correspondent?
I always tell the truth anyway, but I'm happy to be sworn in.
I don't know, he's giving testimony.
Do you want to affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. So that was the testimony at the time. A. Penzer was the attorney that represented them when they came here, and A. said, also confirmed, based on what the rabbi said, no trailers, and it got put in the resolution. I don't think it was necessarily that the board said, we don't, we'll give this to you, but don't have trailers. I think they asked, and the rabbi gave an answer without having a thorough understanding of the saying. So at this point, it certainly makes more sense, they've got an interest in the school, and this would help them to open up for the next school year, and provide the classroom space for them, and he is respectfully requesting that that condition be eliminated.
Brian, did you...
Are they going to have paid parking area?
There is some paid parking area now, I think what we've done in the past, because this is temporary, they're planning on just doing this temporary until they get, at least pay the handicap lot.
I think they should pay the entire parking area.
It's an expense for the school, and obviously...
It's an expense, but why do we have the ordinance that says the parking area should be paid? Because the oil doesn't need to be browned. There's a reason for it. We keep excusing these things, why have the ordinance?
Certainly, the ordinance is for any permanent structure.
You're not going to have any financial... But you should have it paid.
Brian, how many parking spaces do you need for this school? How many classrooms here you have? What are we talking about?
Excuse me, wasn't this...
I think this was like two months ago. And they, and they came back last month, and they asked for it without noticing, and the board said you should notice for this, so now, now we're back with a notice. Yeah, so there's, the ordinance requires one per classroom, one per office, there'll be three classrooms and office, so that the applicant would pay for parking space.
We're not talking about that much, I think it's...
Right, and, and we respectfully request that rather than doing the full-depth payment the way it's normally done, we do just the base coat, and we do like MABC rather than the FABC, so we could do it thinner, and knowing that it's something that only has to last three years.
Okay. And the, all you need is three years on it?
Yes.
Okay.
You said last night, you said two years.
Well, again, the rabbi, who I'm assuming is good at educating children, isn't familiar with the building process, till he gets an architect to design the school, till they do the studies. We do have, you know, all the other approvals that he has to go along with this, he'd like to have three years, if the board wants him to come back after two, we'll come back after two.
Okay, Brian.
And hopefully get it done before then.
Did you see this letter from Bricky Phillips?
Yes, I did, and, and obviously, they're saying, we're in an area, we know that this applicant, like every other applicant, will get the permits that they needed. I looked at the site, it's my opinion on needed, Terry's office will look at it also. Obviously, if we were removing vegetation, or doing something different, we would, we would definitely need a permit, but this applicant, like every other applicant, he likely is required to get all the permits that are required, and the engineering department is very vigilant and making sure that it...
So let me make sure I understand this, you're not going to do any work out here until you have all forms?
That'd be nice, Brian, that'd be nice.
The reason I'm asking, they're raising the issue about the potential category one, and John had, had recommended pave. Are you going to get the status signs off that you're not category one?
Well, a category one, if you already have a driveway, you're allowed to pave, so what we would do is, we would get a professional that would look at the regulations and would provide a letter, and there would be...
Is it because of S.A.s?
Yes, 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 yes.
Technically, you're only paving the front of the building.
We're paving an area that there's already a driveway.
So you're not doing any disturbance?
No, we're not removing vegetation, we're not disturbing the, the, the right grain buffer, we would be paving where there's already a driveway.
So to the best of your knowledge, what you want to do is comply with category one, say?
Yes.
And your professional opinion, the building trailer is there, is not detrimental to anything?
Absolutely not.
To the watershed, or anything?
Absolutely not, as compared to...
What's there now?
The driveway that's there, and as John indicated, it's a gravel driveway, that if anybody's familiar with the area, multiple older vehicles parked there, and the potential for any degradation of the C1 stream was certainly greater with what was there than with what's being proposed.
Because then we could enforce a three-year maximum time limit, instead of being, you put trailers there now, they come back another two-year, you know, and then they add another few trailers to it, and ultimately, they build some sort of facade around it, and they can't keep it without, at the building.
I think the Francine, they're only getting a temporary from Francine.
They keep on getting temporary.
She won't give more than three years.
No, I think she can do three years and then two one-year extensions.
That's it, yeah. That's it.
Then they come back again. You keep on coming back.
Well, eventually, she...
She doesn't give it.
...pulls the stuff, which is why they're coming back to the board now.
Any more, so how about everybody's...
I don't know, she's very strict about it right now, three years and maybe two years extensions. I don't think she's doing it.
So you're saying that these trailers will be removed, and a proper structure will be erected on the property?
Yes.
And you will start before three years?
Yes.
What's going to happen in the house in the meantime?
The house, the portion of it that's usable for an office, would be used as an office.
Any other questions for any board members? Sing no one? We have to open this to the public?
Yeah, they did provide notice.
Okay. We'll open it to the public. Please state your name for the record.
Senator Bryan.
Please, you have to be affirmed.
Do you affirm that this testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Affirm. Actually, I was here by that application, and I could have phoned the board, what happened, and they came, they want to, just off a change of use. It was an existing building. By law, they required to give an architectural plans. They gave an architectural plans, and architectural plans said bedrooms, not classrooms. That the actual architectural plan was a master bedroom, and a kitchen, as a regular house. So it didn't match up with what they're trying to do. So I assumed then that they want to put in trailers. So I, as the attorney then, are you putting in trailers, and that's the reason why you're trying to deceive the board? The attorney at the time put his foot in his mouth, not being truthful to the board, and saying that he, the intent of buying this property is to put in trailers. So he said, no trailers, and that's the reason why they hit it back to the board. I'm not saying that you should object to this application, I'm just saying is in the future, applicants don't have to come to the board and lie, and the board has to figure out if they're lying or not, or if they're trying to do, shikles, how you call it in English. Just be truthful, tell the board that you want to put in trailers, you want to put in this amount of years, and the board should decide. There was an issue there with the curbs and sidewalks, and the board felt then that they will give them the waiver. But as far as trailers, if they wouldn't put their foot in their mouth, they wouldn't have to come back. And as far as notices, I remember there was one objector over here that actually came down and said he doesn't have a problem with the school, he has a problem with the trailers. I don't see him over here. So if you provided notice, and he didn't come, and the notice says that you want to put in trailers, I guess he gave up his rights.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard in this application? Sing no one, we'll close it to the public. We have a motion on this.
We'll make a motion to approve this application with a three-year time limit, and it should really be three years.
And a pay.
And if he has the thin pay, we're fine.
Thin pay for four parking spaces, in the front of the building. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Niberson.
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Please shut your cell phones, yes.
Mr. Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Okay, one second, please. Okay.
I thought that was Sydney.
Go ahead.
I thought that was Sydney first.
He can run this up.
Thank you.
Okay, next, thank you.
Next, the correspondence, we have one, two, three, four, five, six applications that are informally known, or more formally known, across that square. This is a request for landscaping revisions in the backyards between the properties. I feel that this is truly an administrative, I'm sorry, it's a higher-stake building. This is realistically an administrative and properly, a correspondence request, I don't think there's any...
Please take, please talk outside, outside, please.
I don't think there's any barriers associated with the change, but the board, excuse me, the township engineer was not comfortable with the landscaping that the board may have thought was going to be there.
Brian Flannery, still telling the truth.
You have to be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Ally indicated, this is a job where the landscaping plans that were done showed trees in the back between the units to give the people privacy, and it was somebody's crazy idea at the time, and it was going to be nice. The people that are moving in there say, now we don't have a backyard. So the applicant is requesting on these applications to not have to put the trees in the backyard and just do normal landscaping around the foundations of the house like everybody else at the discretion of the planning board and township engineer.
Who are the neighbors behind the other side of the trees?
It's all part of this development. It's a whole block that's developed with duplexes on each side, so it's all the new people moving in, and the people that are moving in are saying we'd rather have a backyard than the trees in between.
Okay.
And as Ally said, there's no ordinance requirement for it, it was just somebody's bad idea at the time the plans were drawn.
Trees are easily put in there for privacy.
I didn't sign them, I didn't sign them, somebody else signed them. Even if I had signed them, I would still say it was a bad idea, but somebody else signed them.
Okay.
This is something that's finished already, this project?
Yes.
People are living there?
The houses are up, they're getting ready to close.
So maybe they're, it's nice that you're saying, I tell the truth and the whole truth, but people see that the waves and the trees are coming.
Obviously, if there's somebody that bought it expecting trees, and they go look at it, and there aren't trees there, they have a contract that says they bought it this way, and they would have the right to tell the builder to put the trees in. And the builder is a reputable builder in the area, and, you know, I'm telling the truth, I vouch for what I say, I can't vouch for everybody else, but this is what I've been told.
Wait, this was noticed, it was noticed, right?
So what?
No, it wasn't noticed, because it's an administrative matter. The township engineer could actually do this on his own, because there's no violation of any of the, and if you noticed, you would be noticing the builder who's here.
Okay.
The builder is telling me that they started putting the trees in, and the buyers came and saw them and complained, and that's why he asked me to submit the letter.
The plans are showing the trees, how much trees are you talking about? The duplexes back up to each other?
Yes, yes, it's duplex to duplex, and there's probably six trees, eight trees behind each person's house.
And how wide are the trees?
Well, the trees will ultimately grow to be... They're arbor lighties that are being planted six foot high, so they'll grow to be 10 feet wide.
Well, it's grown with the sippas.
Yeah.
Okay.
Arbor lighties don't do that.
Okay. Any questions for any board members?
Just one question, Terry.
Yes, Terry.
If you remove trees from the approved plans, do you still comply with the tree ordinance?
We will make sure when we submit for the board engineer's approval that we still comply with the tree ordinance. If we need to plant more trees, we'll find other places to plant them to comply with the ordinance. Looking at the plan, I think we do, because the normal tight landscape plans don't have these things in the back. Again, it was a new idea, we were introducing something new in Lakewood that didn't go over, but we would certainly have to comply with that, because that's an ordinance required.
Okay. Any other questions, any board members? Sing none?
Can I say something?
Okay, we'll open the vote.
Just a question, if he claims that the buyers are the ones that requested the trees should not be put in, does he have a letter from the buyers claiming that? Because I assume Brian doesn't lie, and he's saying it's from his client, but I, first of all, if they don't like the trees, if anybody doesn't like the trees, they could always cut it down, I don't need my time to cut it down. But as far as putting it in, and he claims that the buyers are the ones that don't want, I think the buyers should have something from them, in writing or something that they don't want. They're not ever here to get notice, because this property still belongs to the seller, so they don't know about it. So they saw the plants, they saw trees, and they wanted to find out that there's no reason that there'll be a lot of us, owners didn't pay the cent out, so...
You'll be busy.
That's right.
Okay.
Aaron Mansour, 7-Eleven Park Avenue.
You have to be affirmed.
Eric Ralston, do you affirm that this testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes. Aaron Mansour, 7-Eleven Park Avenue. As a competitive builder to Mr. Kildman, I believe that if he's taking out the tree, it's from the homeowners, because if not, the homeowners will give him a bigger headache. It's not worth his headache to come here and say the homeowners don't want it, and he's going to have all the lawyers on his head. So he is saying the truth.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please raise your right hand.
Do you affirm that this testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Mosher Ritter, R-I-T-T-E-R, I am a prospective buyer, I'm actually at the seal, we're going to be closing hopefully shortly, if everything goes smoothly. This is something that I can't speak on all the buyers, but I know most of them, it's something that they really do not need, and they don't want, it diminishes from the size of their backyard, and it's something that even, like he was saying, he wouldn't want the headache, we were actually, it was one of the things that he was getting a little bit of a headache about, that we were saying, what's this thing on the backyard, it's taking out some of the size, and he said that his hands are tied because it was approved for the shade plant or something, and we're going to try to see what we can do. So I can tell you firsthand that I can't speak on everyone, but maybe there should be an option, if you want it good, if not, not, as a buyer, it's not long.
Is he giving you credit for not planting the trees? I just wanted to know.
I don't know.
Okay. Anybody else would like to be heard on that? Yeah.
I think, I think it would be important. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Shlami Zoldin, One Ten Stratford Place. Shlami Zoldin, One Ten Stratford Place. I'm also a prospective buyer, and I agree with all statements above, that I did not know what probably would be trees behind, I feel that approach makes the property, especially since the trees are directly behind my home, it makes my property even smaller, and definitely would appreciate if they wouldn't have to be there, and I think I speak for other buyers as well.
Is there a fence there? Is that even there?
There's nothing there. If the trees would be along, the path along our line, that as, like we have 25 feet behind each house, that are ours, like it would be directly behind ours, if not on the path, that would be fine, but as it is now, there's some, as it is now, some of the property, you know, the guy behind us, as appears, is larger property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close it to the public. We have a motion...
One second, one second.
I just want to see Brian, if he can lean over so I can see it, because I can't. It is certainly an excessive amount of noise, I thought it was a little over 20.
I don't want to deceive any potential buyers who bought it with the assumption they're going to have the trees, and then we're taking it away.
Understood.
All right, I think that's what you were saying, Mr. Terry.
Shut it up.
That's why I asked if it was noticed. If people come out and say they don't want it, well, there's no notice.
Unfortunately, it was noticed, Mr. Flannery, I get the point, I mean, the properties are all still owned by the developers, the notice is not going to, there's no way to notice the potential property.
And on that, Brian also said that if anybody wants the trees, it's still in their contract, they're more than welcome to have it.
Okay.
I doubt the trees are specifically mentioned in that contract.
Yeah, but the, all the contracts are going to be based on the plans, and the plans show the trees, so anybody wants trees, can have trees. And as you heard from one of the neighbors, the problem is worsened by the fact that the trees can't be down the property line, because there's drainage along the property line. So the drainage has to be in one guy's backyard or the other, and then it makes it look just like he said, that his neighbor has use of his property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have any motion on this?
I make a motion to eliminate the trees as needed.
And if the owner, homeowner, wants it, then we should keep it?
Take it out.
That homeowner. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Hurst.
Yes.
Mr. Solomon.
Yes.
Mr. Graff.
Yes. Thank you.
And the last one?
And the last correspondence, SB 2163 for the PTY Foundation. This is a clarification on barriers previously granted. It's my understanding, the plans approved by the board were signed off, and the plans by the board were signed off, and the site was constructed as such. However, the testimony, the verbal testimony given at the meeting was not in, was in contrast to what was shown on the plan, so the resolution is not specific as to what barriers were granted and were not granted. At this point, a neighbor had brought up the question of whether or not a front yard setback variance was granted, and looking back at the testimony, we discovered the clarification was needed on...
But it's all built already.
It is all built. This is also the intersection where there was that question about the curb, the wrong spot, it's too far into the right of the...
This is the other side of the cross.
Bill Borah. There is a letter, along with your correspondence request, about CJK from Kupnick Realty, who is the owner of the property on the other side, who recommended that the applicant is here, requesting clarification on that variance, maybe you can get them to do something about the curb being, and clarify that right away.
No, we'll listen to it now.
Whatever happened with, was the township responsible to move the car over? There is still going back and forth, and the applicant, the county engineer, they who are dealing with Ocean Town, adds to the final improvements on the road, and that's still ongoing. And that was as a result of the minor subdivision on the opposite side. Just I want to point something else out, this application in question, the variance in question is a secondary front yard setback. It was identified on the plans, we also identified it in our review letter. The testimony was not consistent with the plan or the letter, and that's why the applicant's here.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Grunberg has arrived.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Weinstein.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I think that Ally and Terry actually explained what's going on there pretty clearly, and John Jackson and I spent a lot of time on this over the last couple of months as well. Essentially, though, what happened was, this was passed, this was application, appeal number 2163, there was a resolution passed on April 5th, 2016. Now, both the plans, as well as my legal notice, actually contain reference that the applicant is seeking a variance for front yard setback of 22 feet or 30 feet or required. For some reason, and as I think both Terry and Ally already explained, there was some testimony that seemed to say that the building was in fact 30 feet away, 30, that the front yard setback was 30 feet rather than the 22, therefore, when the actual resolution was passed, there's no mention in the resolution of the granting of the variance. But again, it was, it was shown on the plans, it was referenced in Terry's letter, it was referenced in my legal notice. So it was really just a mistake, what was built matches exactly what was shown on the plans, what was in Terry's letter, what was in my legal notice. The only thing that doesn't match is the resolution. The neighbor pulled up the resolution and actually pointed out that that variance wasn't granted in the resolution. So what we're really asking is for the board to just clarify, I guess, amend the resolution to just grant that variance, and again, to confirm this is already built, done. I think that's pretty much the case.
Did you request that variance?
We did request a variance, it was in the application, I believe, it was definitely in the legal notice, it was definitely on the plans, and it was definitely in Terry's review letter, so the only...
I, I myself listened to the recording, just to go back and hear real time what had happened. I think it was just blatantly a mistake in testimony, because it was shown on the plans, it was in the notice, and it was in Terry's review letter. I think it was just a clear mistake in the testimony that was provided, which, you know, we're not knowing perfect, but...
Part of what may have happened, and I don't know, but this was a secondary front yard. There may have been confusion at the hearing, only about 30 feet being the primary, but not the secondary.
I suspect that the professional who provided the testimony must have been somewhat confused because there were two front yard setbacks, and that's why it happened, but it was clearly insane, and it didn't match what was shown on the testimony, it didn't match what was shown on the plans.
Okay, now, Ms. Weinstein, what's with the sidewalk that Ally brought up?
This... I'm going to put on Mr. Grunberg to discuss that, but I don't know if it's to be sworn in.
Yeah, it has, it should be sworn in, please give me testimony.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do, A. Albeck, Lakewood, New Jersey. This one, if I, that street, we look on Google Earth, has been there for the past 15 years, 12 years, 15 years, for a long time, when the last development was built on, off the street of, Elwood Village. We did not touch Biltmore, we did not, we did not, we didn't add any curb, the only curb we did, we repaired a curb that cracked for the apron, the sidewalk always was there, we had no improvements on Biltmore, it always was there. On the counter, I, and we spoke with the county engineer, he pulled up on Google Earth, because his, go back to store room images, everything's there. We did not improve that, that's not, we have no interest over there. Spoke to the county engineer, he said, yeah, it's here, you know it, it's messed up from the beginning, he's working with the developer across the street, to see how maybe make a right way in, or something that, the school is there, we did not, we did not propose anything of Biltmore, and I feel it's totally unfair if that's somebody else, but it's, they're not fronting there, they're not touching it, we did not have anything to do with that. And the plans did not require us, and the plans did not ask us to do anything, the plans were approved, the plans were signed, and the school is done and in.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for any board members? Sing no one? We will open the public for a second.
Further, the attorney said that...
Who wants to, please?
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Affirm. She claims that they gave notice 30 feet required, but 22. As somebody pointed out, they might need 50 feet required, as H.D. said.
We pointed that out, all right.
So they gave notice, and the notice is wrong.
I don't know what the notice said.
The notice was correct, I can pull it out. Ally and I checked it, I remember doing it on the phone. It definitely, I apologize, is correct, actually. It's HD7 and 50 feet is required, and it was 30 feet, I think, on one, there were two front yard setbacks, one was 30, one was 22, it's actually 22.02 or something. But the notice was correct, I don't think, wait, let me do that. There it is. In the HD7 zone, the minimum required front yard setback is 50 feet. Applicant is proposing a front yard setback of 22 feet, and according to his request for a variance for same as with David, March 2nd, 2016. It was the notice for a public hearing to have been held on April 5th, 2016. Mark this, we can certainly mark the legal notice from now on.
The legal notice from now.
The legal notice from now, we can give you also. Ally's got the legal notice from now. Just, Mr. Clive, the legal notice that was provided this time doesn't say that, it just says that it's clarifying the mistake here. Applicant received preliminary and final site plan approval to construct in addition to an existing school under appeal number 2163, and a resolution that was passed on to an existing school under appeal number 2163 and a resolution that was passed on April 5th, 2016 and memorialized on May 17th, 2016. Both the plans and the legal notice in connection with that matter reference of the avenue proceeding variance for front yard setback of 22 feet actually does say where 30 feet was required, it should have said 50. Nevertheless, conflicting testimony was given at the, at the hearing stating that the front yard setback was 30 feet, so the resolution failed to properly reflect the granting of the variance for front yard setback. Applicant hereby requests that the resolution and this statute be amended to confirm to conform to the plans and legal notice provided for the grant of variance for front yard setback of 22 feet. It does have the typo in there that it says the 30 feet instead of 50 feet, but I think the original legal notice was correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not finished. Just interrupted. Just want to clarify on the, on the road. It means sidewalk currently is a sidewalk, the property is extended in the middle of the road. The township ordinance requires developers, when they go to develop something above thousands of square feet, to fix up all the infrastructure, the frontage of the road and the right of way, no matter how bad it was before, they still are required to do it. Now, the proper proceeding should have been that the applicant should come over to the board and ask, we want a variance, we want only 22 feet, and I agree that it should be given. But the second thing is, he should ask, I want a waiver for not requiring me to finish off the road. By then not doing that, and they're still not doing it, it's basically saying this, oh, it's just on the plans, it was wrong, we're not required to do it. But they are required to do it, and then comes another judge and blames the engineering department for if they didn't get a waiver, they are required, they need to require them to do it. And the planning board is perfectly happy. It's a yeshiva, nobody wants to put hardship on yeshiva to make them fix up roads. So the planning board looks good that they didn't ask them to do a waiver, so we never gave it to them, and it's just a mistake. And the engineering department gets stuck with the problem. If the proper proceeding should be this, that they should come and ask, like I mentioned, like everybody else, even though it's a yeshiva, we want a waiver for that, for putting a sidewalk in the middle of the road. And the planning board has to approve it or deny it, and if the planning board approves it, they look bad, because how could you approve a sidewalk in the middle of the road? And if the planning board denies it, they also look bad. How could you make a yeshiva spend all his money because he's doing the right thing? So that's the reason why you're over there, and you have to make that tough decision that you look bad either way. But the applicant from his side should do the right thing and ask for a waiver, not say this, it's just we're not required to do it. Ask for a waiver, and if the board wants to give them a waiver for completing the road the way it's supposed to be, so let it be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please be affirmed.
You reaffirm the testimony you're about to give, the whole truth, nothing but the road is haunted?
Yes. Moshe Zines, Z E I N E S, 112 Elm Hurst Boulevard, Lakewood. As you may know from my address, I live down the block from this sheep people. I often give the boys rides because I do not enjoy when they stand in the middle of the road after they pay so much money to put them a nice sidewalk. I give them rides, and then they give them a little speech about it. They put in the sidewalk. I saw it. I live down the block, I walk there a lot, I bike there a lot, I drive there a lot, I saw the day that they put in the sidewalk. They're coming to you and selling you ability goods. They're telling you, we didn't touch Biltmore. Shocker, lies. They put in the sidewalk, they ripped up the sidewalk that was there, and they put a new one in the same exact bad spot. That's ridiculous. There was a problem, we understand. It was a problem for 14 years, I believed them. There was a problem. But they ripped up the sidewalk and they put it back in the same bad place. That's ridiculous. Once they paid to pick up the sidewalk, they shouldn't have put it in the right place. And I'll tell you why they didn't put it in the right place. I saw yesterday, because their boys play on the yard that they built them, and if they had put the sidewalk in the correct place and the curb in the correct place, the boys would have less room. They would have less room to play. I understand, they built their school very close to the road, as you've heard, 22 feet instead of 50 feet. I understand Mr. Krupnik has a thing across the road and he agreed that he's going to make it safer, but he doesn't want either of them to make the makeup 32 foot wide road. The school came in first, they shouldn't have done this right then. I don't know whose fault it is, but it's their property and they shouldn't have done it right. And even if the township engineering department didn't catch on to this, the deer engineers should have caught on to it and done it right. Like I said, I live down that block, buses come down my block, they have a whole bus full of Bay State Girls, they drop off the entire bus right in front of my house because they don't go on the towage drive. When they try and make a left turn, even a right turn, from Biltmore onto the cross, it's nuts. They have to drive onto Mr. Krupnik's part, part of the pavement there, sorry, the buses go on the pavement that Mr. Krupnik owns in order to turn on the cross.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Again, I am going to school, I feel very bad, I still give the boys rides, 100% understand.
I hear what you're saying.
They shouldn't have done that.
Okay, no problem. I hear what you're saying. Thank you. Okay, Terry, this is, this is all built already, right?
It's correct.
Right? The only thing we're here for is to correct the resolution?
This is a clarification on the setback for the...
Okay. And what's happening about the sidewalk? The township is doing anything, engineering department, anything will be done?
The applicant for the subdivision on the other side of the street, per the minor subdivision approval, is dealing with Ocean County Engineering, and they're trying to develop a mutually acceptable road improvement at the intersection going Biltmore North. That's not done yet. We're probably going to have a meeting with the applicant of the subdivision, the township and county in the near future.
And the county may take away property from them, take away the side, remove it.
The county is going to recommend what it would like to see with respect to the cross street access. That may or may not be to the township's satisfaction. We're probably going to have a meeting on that.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Okay, Mr. Weinstein. Okay, we'll close it to the public. Do we have a motion on this application?
This is to...
Approve or not approve the resolution, the change?
To indicate whether or not you intended to previously grant that variance as shown in the plans.
It was intended to be granted.
Okay. Okay, so you'll move for it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Hipperston?
No.
Mr. Flankford?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Acroft?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the public hearing.
Before we start with the SC 2200, I did receive correspondence at about 5:30 today regarding SC 2207, listed as number 3 in a public hearing. Apparently, this subdivision is proposing to utilize the neighboring pump station, which is a private pump station on private property.
Between, the 2207?
Yes.
Okay.
And that neighbor had written us a letter requesting that we table this application until that neighbor has time to figure out what this applicant intends to do. What my understanding from Mr. Weinstein is that this applicant was willing to table, however, from Mr. Fetter's face, I'm guessing that's not the case.
I'm unaware of any tabling.
Ali, one second. That was an objector called you.
Correct. I received a letter about...
And the objector's here?
Yes.
If I had, I was advised there was a letter sent when I walked in here at about 5:00 to 6:00. We're not agreeing at the time to carry it, however, my client is on the way here. I would request there are other applications on, if we can move the other application first, and we might be able to resolve this again. My clients will be here in a few minutes, we have other applications, at this time I'd ask them for, to be carried.
Are you the attorney, any other applications?
Yes, but I already advised, the engineers can be outside, my client will be here any minute now. I already advised him that I have other applications, but...
We'll do both?
Yes.
Okay, so then we can continue with item number 2.
And then we'll go to 4. We'll skip them.
Ask the SC 2200 for Aramansore, minor subdivision created four lots from line on Autobahn and Avenue.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the variances?
Sure. As indicated in our initial pamphlet, variances are necessary, including them in a lot area. Is that the only variance?
No variance.
Oh, okay. I, I know that you eliminated the original sidewalk setback.
Yes.
And the...
Sorry.
You swear, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, think the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. I wrote Manzore, 711 Park Avenue, Lakewood, New Jersey, 08701.
That is correct. I'm looking at the language of those, but you, the revised plans, included the touchback of the lot area, it is now...
Okay.
So this is a fully conforming minor subdivision?
Okay.
Believe it or not.
This is considered minor?
Which sidewalks are Simon Klein?
It's future development of others. I was looking at the whole, whole picture.
Is this, is this...
It's not in the CAFRA, that's why we're in a subdivision.
Unfortunately, this one, this one piece of property was not included in the CAFRA permit, which is why it's not eligible for the administrative minor subdivision.
From the Oak Street card. Okay, Brian?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Brian Flaner, Dax, New Jersey. Yes, this, this property was not included in the original CAFRA approval process or would have been on the list with the Oak Street Miners. And that's because it was a house sign of somebody living in it. The properties that were in that Oak Street CAFRA were there because it was a condition on our permit that in order to tie it to the sewer, they needed to get a CAFRA permit. This doesn't mean that this is a simple four lot conforming minor subdivision.
Okay, there's no variance whatsoever on this?
No.
You have sidewalks, everything is there.
Sidewalks? All, all the improvements are being constructed by the Oak Street Corp and Mr. Manzore is paying for it. There, there's the recapture ordinance that was adopted by the township that requires him to pay his fair share of that. So he, he's part of the Oak Street Corp, but he doesn't have, he doesn't have the benefit of doing this by administrative minor.
And how many parking spaces per unit?
Or per, or per, same as everybody.
Okay. Any questions for any board members in this application? Sign all in, we'll open to the public. Anybody in the public would like to be heard on this application?
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I swear. Shloem McLean, this is not required in planning board.
Can you add your state's name?
I was informed by an individual in Lakewood that CAFRA gave a violation on this property for violating the CAFRA restrictions on these properties. So usually, the way it works, as you know tonight, is hundreds, if not thousands of people in Jackson on a CAFRA application. And they didn't come to the planning board to get it approved or to the zoning board, they first went to CAFRA to get it approved. So I'm wondering why this applicant didn't feel like he has to go to CAFRA first and then come to the planning board to get it approved? Don't know the process, why people usually do it that way, because if I remember the Oak Street Corridor, when they came to the planning board, they said, oh, we got approval from CAFRA, they felt it so good, therefore, as you guys approve it. I'm talking about the original ordinance.
Mr. Klein, what do you mean there's a violation on this property from CAFRA?
CAFRA came down to inspect the properties of Oak Street Corridor because there was some yeshivish stuff going on over there. And they saw that they're working on this property, and this property was not supposed to be developed with town owns accordingly to the permit that was given into them.
Okay, one second. Terry, are you aware of any violation of this property that it can go forward?
I can say that any CAFRA applications are copied to the township clerk who gives them over to us. Any violation from the soil district or from CAFRA, come to the engineering office so that we can issue stop work orders. I have not seen anything from CAFRA regarding any sort of violation or stop work order request on this CAFRA permit.
Okay.
Because Brian said before, this property is not restricted by CAFRA. If I recall, that was explained over here in the township, the reason why these properties were restricted to the CAFRA, this whole neighborhood, is because there was a sewer system put in, and CAFRA restricted the whole neighborhood. And this property was part of that neighborhood regardless if they tapped into that sewer or not. So I just need Brian to clarify it, that if CAFRA sees this video, that they should know that there was an engineer testifying, he's the one that actually applied for the CAFRA originally, with the township's money, with the township's name. So...
I will just let you answer it.
As usual, Mr. Klein tries to best, but he's got a lot of inaccuracies in his comment, and I hope he shows this video to CAFRA so that he can be happy that I'm telling the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. This area needed a CAFRA permit because when New Jersey American extended their water main through to Oak Street, the engineer that did that permit listed all the blocks that would have a secondary impact. This block was not listed. This lot has an existing house on it that's already tied into the public sewer. So therefore, you get it to CAFRA if you have a sewer extension over 1,200 feet, if you have shared infrastructure, or if you have more than 74 units to 75 units. This project is exempt from CAFRA. It's always been exempt from CAFRA. It's always going to be exempt from CAFRA. It doesn't need a CAFRA permit. I don't know what he's talking about with the CAFRA violation. If there was a CAFRA violation, the township's engineers office would know it, the applicant would know it, and the applicant would have to deal with it. So we have a conforming minor subdivision.
Your testimony, there's no violation as far as you know on this?
I have no knowledge of any violation, and I would assume that it would be available if there was that. And even if there is, the applicant has to deal with it. So this is a very simple application. I appreciate Mr. Klein's tenacity. He did give us the, the push for sidewalks, which is a good thing. So I, that's the, you know, positive thing I could say for Mr. Klein, but right now it's just wasting everybody's time.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the second thing, basements. There's a lot of problems going on at Oak Street Corridor with the basements and attics. We were not able to question about it before because it was administrative minors and they got the special treatment of getting it approved, and now we finally have an application that the board addressed this problem because as they're selling these units, they're selling it to rentable basement plus rental attic. That's how they're selling the units. Yes, they're not selling it to guys in Lakewood, they're selling it to the guys in Brooklyn, the casino guys in Brooklyn.
You have the brochure where they're selling it then?
What?
We're not approving two rentals in a basement and a rental then.
You're not approving even one rentable basement, Dean? It's not saying what it is.
One rental, one rental is legal, two rentals is not legal. And we should, we should make the thing, there's no staircase from the outside going, going upstairs to that, they could have a possibility in the attic.
Okay.
Now, the issue with the basements is, any duplex in Lakewood, the duplex is not finished as an apartment. That means is, we have thousands of apartments in Lakewood that have illegal basements. I'm talking about illegal rentable units. Now, the reason for that is, is two reasons. One is the builders are not putting in sprinkler systems. The second reason is that there's not enough parking. Accordingly, to the RSIS of the state of New Jersey, you need five parkings if you're doing it a legal basement, equals the basement, the rentable basement, finishing up, is, and Brian just spoke for two minutes on his answer.
Thanks, Terry.
So accordingly to the RSIS, now talking about the UDO, you need to have every unit calculated for itself. So you have three upstairs, you need two parkings for downstairs. I agree, he's selling it to the casino so they don't need so much parking, as we spoke last night. But accordingly to the law, if you're putting in an apartment over there, you will need more parking. And therefore, is people are finishing up the basements and not finishing up as a legal apartment, they're renting it out illegally, and basically is, this planning board keeps on putting the head in the sand like we don't know, we're playing dumb. We don't know anything about it. It's not our problem. It is your problem to take care of it, and technically is, if it needs more parking or it needs sprinklers, you should request the builders to do something about it, or send a letter to the township committee to deal with it. But I don't know how you guys could sit over here and accept the fact that there's so many illegal basement apartments and sitting back and saying this, we're not going to deal with it, it's not our problem. You're the township planners, you should deal with it, you should take care of it, like you're doing with all the help that you're giving to the builders, like the Oak Street Ordinance that you recommended to the township to give them the special treatment. You should take care of all the illegal basements." I'm not talking about the past, I'm talking about the future.
Thank you, thank you. I got, I got your point.
You got my point?
Yes, I did.
Let me see if you could do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terry, let's start with you. RS, how much parking?
I'll do building permits.
I know. And let's take one thing at a time, parking. What is the requirement? Is it four per unit or five?
The UDO standard and the parking order is depending upon the number of bedrooms.
Okay, what's the max?
It's usually four and can go to five up to the nine bedroom.
The township parking requirements are in excess of RSIS standards. That was changed a number of years ago, given the anticipation of basement rentals.
Allie, I always knew we'd go 2.8 for upstairs and 1.2 for the basement, which was a total of four? Am I, am I not correct?
I don't know where the split comes from. The calculation is based off of number of bedrooms. Any basement, regardless of what's in the basement, regardless of whether it's finished, counts as two bedrooms.
Okay. Yeah. Shh. Mr. Cliner, please go outside to speak. Everybody, please go outside to speak, we cannot hear.
Everything upstairs that is a bedroom, a sewing room, a flight room, a toy room, a craft room, an office, anything that could be a basement, or excuse me, could be a bedroom, which the township engineer defines as a minimum of 70 square feet, has a closet and a window, each of those is counted as one bedroom. So the township engineer, when he gets building permit, he counts up all of the bedrooms, potential bedrooms upstairs regardless of what they're called. If there's a basement, whether it's finished, whether it's not finished, whether it's rented or not, it counts as two more bedrooms. And then, there's a direct calculation for how many parking spaces is required based off of that.
So, Allie, in other words, you're saying the maximum that could be is five for each single unit with a basement?
I think when you hit nine bedrooms for the entire unit, you hit the five, the fifth space.
Okay.
Now, just keep in mind, what the engineering department is looking at is when the house is first built. If someone wants to come back three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, and redo the basement, we don't see that.
Right.
We see when it's first constructed, we see the initial plans only.
Okay, now, if somebody comes with a smaller house and we give them four bed, four parking spaces and then they build bigger, if it's in the envelope, technically, they would need more?
If the plan application includes architectural plans which are interpreted to be nine or more bedrooms, they will have to add spaces above the four in accordance with the town rules.
The township engineer essentially disregards what the planning board is granting with respect to parking unless you're granting a variance. The board says you need four spaces.
When you say disregard, he's not saying less, he's saying with anything more.
And anything more?
If the planning board says you need, you know, Brian gets up here and says, "We're going to give you four spaces," and the nice bit plot plans that go to the engineering department and it turns out you need more than that, they require...
Right, if it needs, has nine bedrooms?
Or they turn into five, or will not turn into three.
Okay, okay, I understand. Now, the next thing, with a sprinkler system, when does it, or Brian, you can answer that to Terry.
The building department completely governs that on whether, when it's required, what is not required?
When is it considered a multifamily and you need sprinklers?
As a building provision, the board should not be building.
So we're not approving it or not approving it? If it's needed, then the township inspection department will make them put it in?
A residential or non-residential structure is going to be subject to building code review.
Okay, okay.
The public, close?
Yes, close the republic.
So for the record, the applicant agrees to follow the laws, even though Mr. Cliner says they don't. I asked the realtor after the last meeting when he said that they're advertising for two bedrooms and a, two, two basement apartments and attic for the brochure. And the brochure does not say that at all. So I don't know where that's coming from.
So as far as you know, there's maximum one rental in the basement?
That, that's all the law allows.
And that's what?
Whether people convert it to that, they need to get a building permit so that they put in the sprinklers and the fire separation and they have enough parking and they have appropriate living spaces. And Mr. Cliner says there's violations of that, people doing it illegally. And there probably are, people do a lot of illegal things. That's not the board's job, no more than it is if there are people that speed, not as much in Lakewood anymore because you can't do it much. It's not the board's job to stop that. The board's job is to look at the ordinance, this application complies completely with the ordinance. And on the sound of it, we've spent this much time on a completely conforming application.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for any board members? Mr. Grunberg?
The question was that, of being that the basement is rented out, should consider another additional unit?
It is.
Because it's not just an additional bedroom, it's just an additional unit, should require more parking.
My understanding is that the building department, they actually have, they have technical classifications for building type with respect to building code that, that may differ from the typical definitions we use for our ordinance. So my understanding is that actually when there's a rentable basement, the building department, for all intents and purposes, calls it a two-family home because that's the way the code is classified. So it's not considered a house with a department. For whatever reason, the building department has decided that it's properly classified as a two-family home. I don't know what that means in terms of taxes or fire or anything along those lines, but the building department is properly classifying it as more than just a single-family unit.
Now, that's a two-family home, would that require more parking?
No, for our ordinance, the basement is counted as two bedrooms regardless of how it's inhabited and how it's split up.
So we're always requiring four. If there's more bedrooms than that, then you, you agree to go up to five?
Yes, yes.
That's the law.
And, and if you put in six bedrooms in the basement and 12 bedrooms upstairs, then you should have more parking than that. And the Lakewood ordinance exceeds the RSIS. The RSIS is the maximum that you're allowed to require by a municipality. I haven't heard anybody complain that the township standards require more because it makes sense. It's like the 32-foot wide roads. That's more than the board is allowed to ask for, but the developers know that makes sense. So they do it even though the board technically could not require it. It's the same with parking.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on this application. Move. Second. Roll call, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hickerson?
Yes.
Mr. Theng?
Yes.
Mr. Follmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grappel?
Yes.
Okay, so I will go to number four now?
We're going to move to number four, application SB 2230 Summit Court Rule. This is the major site type for a synop on Summit Court.
Okay, Terry, please close the variances.
The submission waivers, we have identified on third paper review, including toll booth concourse, manning, keepers of the tortoise, the EIS, and trade protection amendment. We support the, the G waivers as well as the EIS. We recommend that if the trade protection act, the wave, for completed purposes, that they comply during the process.
So let's vote on the waivers first. Do we have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendations?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any nays, no? Okay, waiver's approved. Okay, go on to Zomi.
We're on to the variances and relief. I've got one in the letter. The relief includes a lot area variance, lot width, even a rear yard setback, building coverage, relief is necessary despite to the terms of CAFRA. And there's a potential issue with the ADA space dimension setback all along. Okay, that's it, Mike?
Okay, this is YNC.
Good evening, Mr. German. Board members, Mary Mornstein on behalf of the applicant Summit Court School. I'm here tonight for an application for construction of a new shul to be located on the bulk of the cul-de-sac of Summit Court that is intersection with William Street, which will actually have a basement apartments to house the rabbi and his family. Just so the board should understand the need for this shul, this is actually a pretty isolated neighborhood, you're talking Williams, Summit, Elaine, there's a few streets over there, Cedar Court probably.
Where's Williams?
Williams is, well, Williams is where? But, it's...
Harold Rudman?
Yes.
So they build, but the vehicles are?
Uh, yeah, but they're further off. The reason, the reason they had there's a need for this shul is because the, the people that live in this neighborhood don't want their children to have to cross Prospect Street, which is a busy street. So what they decided to do was to build a new shul, which is, which is meant to be a small shul and really just to accommodate this particular area, as you said, maybe you could see that on, on the map there, where you have Williams and Williams, really on, on, I guess it's the, the south side of Prospect Street. And then you've got, Williams then, there's a cul-de-sac there in the corner and it goes into Summit, which is actually where this is. And then off of Summit, there's a few streets, I think Elaine and a couple of others, and actually Cedar Court actually goes off of Williams as well.
That's right behind the hospital?
It's right behind the hospital. Now, other than these new streets, this area is virtually cut off from everything else. Behind Cedar, there's property that's undeveloped, it's wooded until you get to Sterling Place. There would really be no way for people to even cut through there or have a need to use this shul because there are tools in that area. There are some variances that are being requested. First, I do want to point out that there is no simple hole in this shul. There was initially one shown on the plans and it was eliminated.
How big is the shul?
The shul, I guess when I, I guess when we compiled it to the testimony, I landed to that one. But there are some, there are some variances being requested, most notably because the lot itself does not conform to the requirements of the R-12 zoning which it is located. The lot is actually 9,221 square feet, so it's undersized in the R-12 zone. And it has a lot width of 80.5 feet or 90 feet is requested. So those are obviously existing conditions. There's, there's also a variance for lot coverage, again, necessitated by the fact that the lot in and of itself is undersized. As for the variance for the ADA ramp in the rear of the property, that's six feet from the rear yard setback, we actually believe this one's a gray area as to whether, whether or not in fact it's a variance, but in abundance of caution, since Terry's office identified it as a variance, we've noticed her as a variance and we're requesting a variance, we will provide testimony to justify the granting of that variance. I will point out that the ramp, if you noted on the architectural plans, it's this handicap ramp is rattle high. The reason for the height of the ramp at, at that level is because there's an apartment in basement where the rabbi is going to be living. The rabbi wanted to have, to be able to get some sunlight into his, into his apartment and therefore need windows there and therefore need the ramp actually above those windows, which is why it is, it was, it was constructed in the fa, it's been constructed in the fashion that it is. At this point, I guess I would ask that Brian sworn?
Do you swear your firm? That's what I see. The Oak Street Corridor, the two?
I do. Brian Clinerdax, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I've marked three exhibits. A1 is a tax map, just showing where it is, but Allie's Google Earth is much better. A2 is the map that was submitted, A3 is, 3 is a rendering showing the neighborhood shul that's proposed. As indicated in Terry's report, we need a lot area variance. The lot is 9,221 square feet where the ordinance requires 12,000. This is an existing condition and as you can see on Google Earth, there's houses on each side of it. There's a house on this lot that this rabbi currently lives in that he's proposing to knock down so he can provide this shul and, and residents also as well. Minimum lot width variance, 90 feet is required, 80.5 feet, again, an existing condition. The, the rear yard setback, Terry's office indicates the, the ramp violates that. I, I could argue that the ordinance allows handicap ramps within three feet of a property line, but it's, even if you decide a variance is needed, it's certainly the benefits outweigh the detriment. This is providing handicap access to the, the shul on the first floor. Maximum building coverage, we're talking about 140 square feet over the allowable 25 percent. We're looking for 27.2 percent. And the, the reason for that is because the rabbi needs to have his residents on one floor and then provide the, the shul.
Brian, what's with parking? How many parkings do you have?
There's seven parking spaces provided for the ordinance. The sanctuary is 962 square feet, which would require two spaces and the house would require three spaces, that's five, seven are being provided.
Can we change that?
We change that. We don't go according to that calculation anymore.
Allie, was that changed?
It hasn't been adopted by the media yet.
It wasn't adopted.
We've made recommendations on that.
But even if the ordinance said more was required, this is a neighborhood shul. This YNC has indicated where these people are, they all live in close proximity. This isn't bringing people in from other areas to pray. This is, this is a man that's knocking his house down and putting in a shul so that the residents in the area can pray without crossing busy roads.
Is there any on-street parking over there?
There, there is limited on-street parking. It certainly would be my testimony that the people that are going to use this are from the area and it's a very short walk and they would be walking. But at, at present time, the ordinance says we need five and we provide seven.
A shul with five parking spaces is not a lot.
It, it's a small shul. Again, Brian, how many square feet is the sanctuary?
962 square.
We've said that before, we count from there.
We need 10 for a quorum. So we're short three spots right when we gotta go.
How far is the hospital from this?
Well, the rabbi lives in the basement, he doesn't have to move his car.
You can see on, on Google Earth that the hospital's a block and a half away.
Is it possible to get any more parking spaces on that?
No, it's not possible. Yeah, that's, that's the lot that's available in the neighborhood. And in order to accommodate the rabbi's family and the residents and, and have the shul for the neighborhood, this is the most we can fit.
You, you agree no outside surface on that?
Yes.
And sidewalks you making over there?
Yes.
Okay.
For Terry's report, we need a permit or buffer relief. If the neighbor wants a fence on the property line to provide a buffer, the applicant would clearly agree to it. You can see that in the rear of it, there are streets there now, it's an open space that ties in between the, the townhouses and the High Point Apartments.
I'd clarify, Brian, I think the fences, or, I'm sorry, I think the site plan show fences on front.
Okay.
It's only four feet of setback and then six feet around the residence.
Item seven indicates that the ADA ramp is within five feet of the property adjoining lot 37. I think if you look at the plan, it, it's not part of the ramp when it's in that close proximity. The ramp starts a little further away, so we'll get my testimony that we don't need a variance as indicated in number seven. But if the board feels we need one, certainly it's a, the, the use is inherently beneficial use. The, the ramp that allowing the handicap access, it serves the benefit, the benefits would certainly outweigh the detriment.
Just one question on that, Brian. The area of the ramp that closes to lot 37, that's virtually going to be at the range, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's not going to be elevated that that way.
That's correct. Right, that's...
The sidewalk functionally, except it's part of the ramp.
Yes.
Then you're going to have a four-foot檐al fence up to the setback and then six feet on the setback.
Yes.
So practically speaking, the owners of lot 37 are not going to see that far the way.
That's correct.
And certainly the owners of lot 37 will notice. And if they have a problem with that ramp, they don't need to worry.
Brian, what's with number nine, about the refuse enclosure? Garbage? Page five?
Page five. We would propose the rollout to tanks that would be rolled out to the curb and, and they would go behind the building.
Sure, I understand.
Oh, oh, there's, there's, there's an area shown on, on the side toward the back.
There, she's showing it.
Which one, Thomas Carver's?
You know, if we look at the, the master plan and the municipal land use law as far as the justification for the variances, the master plan of 2007 on page, page 39, has a section on houses worship. And it goes in to say how, you know, the, they tried to be accommodated, but the conclusion is the need has only been partially addressed. The ordinance, the same master plan on page 56 says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning. And this is certainly smart growth to have a, a neighborhood shul that serves the, the neighborhood and the municipal land use law NJAC 40 call and 55 D2. and the municipal land use law NJAC 40 call and 55 D2. A says encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals and general welfare. And it certainly promotes the general welfare and then the safety by not requiring the residents to.
And you agree to the rest of the report?
Yes.
And everything else? Now, do you know how many men you're gonna have, how many times they're gonna pray there?
How many men? I can swear on the rabbi if you'd like.
Okay. Because there's no parking, I want to limit it to...
One million shabbos, one million minhah.
Now, you could testify for him.
What?
Sorry?
What? Is it gonna be anything new? No, it's in there? Actually, it's only gonna be used on the Sabbath. There are not going to be weekday men. But, right, but, exactly. But, being that I was the attorney for the other shul that had a condition in the resolution that said it was going to be used for only weekday, for only weekday use, I did not want that to be made a condition of the resolution because the board members as well as myself know what happens in a few years' time down the road, the neighbors of the neighborhood shul want to use it during the week as well and then become that if we fight the quarantine.
Could we limit it to one minyan a day?
Yes. Yes, it would not be a minute factor. There could be one minyan in the morning and one minyan at night. That's fair and I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, yes, because I think we both know what really what happened.
I want it to be open.
I don't, honestly, I don't think that's the intent initially. I think initially it's really only meant to be used on the Sabbath, but I think by that, putting a condition in the resolution that says it can't be used for more than one prayer service in the morning and one prayer service at night during the week, that will...
Unless you have more parking, you come back with more parking?
I understand.
It could be a minute factor.
I understand.
Well, if you have the...
Get the spaces.
Any questions from the board, any board members? Mr. Grunberger? Okay, Brian?
Yes, the applicant agrees to provide adequate lighting.
I asked Brian if he agrees to everything on the report. He said yes.
It's good to point out, the applicant will certainly comply and provide adequate lighting.
Any other questions, any board members? Seeing none, we'll open it to the public. Mr. Klein, first time tonight.
Do you affirm in the testimony about the street, the whole street, nothing about the shul?
I affirm. As I'm looking at this running over here, there's seven parkings over there. If I'm looking over here at the actual plan...
Show it to Brian, you asking him?
Brian, Brian. Shh. You see?
I can't see three.
Hold on, let me first show it to Brian. You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So you have eight back stacked parking. So my question is...
Mr. Klein is very observant. The architectural rendering, which is meant to show how beautiful the building is going to be, doesn't show the handicap space. We don't have the handicap sign. It's a little off. The parking that's proposed is in accordance with the plan, which includes three stacked parking, which are for the residents.
So we have to get the resolution straight this time. We're building according to the plans.
Yes.
Not according to the rendering, right?
And we're following the laws.
This is where my issue is. If he is giving, again, first of all, let me comment on the fact that you sent to the township committee recommendation on changing the ordinance on the, on the shuls and they simply so far ignored you guys. If a developer comes in, the vacated street, the selling property, they're more than willing to hear them. But when this planning board sent them a list of recommendations and they outright ignored you guys, I don't think it's acceptable. But that's a comment on that. You did send them a recommendation, they didn't act on it.
They don't have to act on it.
They don't have to, but you are the planners in this town.
Okay.
But about the stack parking, if he wants to use those parking for the shul, I have a different idea for him. Why doesn't he make parking on the roof? If somebody comes to the shul to use the parking, you can't use stack parking because one guy goes out before, other guy goes out afterwards, and how are they going to deal with stack parking? They become friends, yeah. Now, as far as the, what he said, it's just a good idea. Just put the parking lot on this on the roof and he will complete compliance with the As far as the going through the restriction that the chairman was recommending, that they should only use it for one minyan a day, or even the restriction for shabbos, you don't have a mechanism or liquid to enforce that. Even if somebody goes in, if you have a rotten neighbor that goes and snitches on them and tells them that they have more than one minyan a day, guess what? The building department, inspection department is not going to enforce that. They don't enforce usage.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Parking, they're not asking about parking variance as the ordinance has written as of now, right?
Correct.
Okay, so they have a right to come with this application.
I'm not objecting to it.
And we are trying and we're putting in conditions inside that they don't listen to it.
You corrupt the sheriff. No, I'm trying to point out, I don't want you guys to make yourself look sweet, that you're putting in conditions when this condition is not enforceable.
So we do what we have to do.
Right.
And that's it. And one thing we have to do is sit here, but a lot of times the things you say, outcome of the power, let's go.
Because it feels bad on you?
No.
No, you're making a condition, a recommendation to only use it a one minyan a day when you cannot enforce it. You should, again...
We are not an enforcing agency. That's the township committee or the inspection department. We make conventions to the benefit of the town, that's it.
Your attorney that is not here today, Mr. Jackson, says that legally you cannot enforce it. It's not an enforceable condition, the usage of the property. If you're approving it, you gotta approve it the way it is. You cannot enforce how many times people should down over there and whatnot.
Okay.
But one thing you have to take in consideration with the parking, I know it's complying and whatever. This is a cul-de-sac, remember that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard on this application? Seeing none, we'll close it to the public. Would you like to say anything?
No.
The only comment I will make, just to address Mr. Klein, is that the stacked parking spaces are really for the rabbi and his wife. They're the ones who are going to be willing to get locked in.
Mrs. Weinstein and Brian over here, for the future, we have to try to see shuls and schools to have as much parking as possible. We did recommend to the ordinance should be one per 100.
No, we all agree with you. In this particular instance, it's impossible. You're talking about a neighborhood where there was no land to acquire to put a shul. So the rabbi, the captor, sitting in the audience, pretty much is giving up his house. He's giving up his property, which happens to be all of 9,000, roughly 9,000 square feet. There just isn't enough room for him to make a shul, a place for himself to live for himself and his family, and more parking spaces than what's here. If there would be more room, certainly, we would have provided it, yes. We do notice and we will be telling all the applicants.
And you do agree to try, only to keep it to one minyan? Yeah, I don't know if it's enforceable, but to keep to one minyan because there's no parking over there?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on this application.
I move to approve the application.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes.
Mr. Herstle?
Yes.
Mr. Paulman?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes. Thank you.
Ali, could you follow up with that regulation that's happening? If they're not interested, we don't know. Okay.
It was discussed recently. I remember the mayor was questioning on some of the regulations and he had an explanation on what the regulations were and he was intending to follow up with some of them.
Welcome to come to the meeting here. Okay, number five.
Are you ready to go back to number three?
I have to go back up to number... Number two. Number three. Number three, I'm sorry.
Okay. Application SC 2207 for spring 48 LLC, it's a major subdivision, we create 10 lots.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Yes, I would, Jerry. Beginning with submission waivers, they're paid for our bulk review. The waivers include...
Number three, one seven. It's a, one seven, it's the wrong one. What, 2207, yes. Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
That's right. Submission waivers include Tropo, Winston, Lot 2, Tropo is 208, Condo is in 2023 boundaries, NMDP 520, and the EIS. We recommend waiver of the B site features. We recommend the waiver of the EIS based on how environment is treating properties per NJAD mapping. They will have to comply with the protectional assistance.
Okay. We have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendation. A second. Motion a second, one favor.
Aye.
Any names? No, approved. Okay, let's go on to zoning.
Other variances, variances are required in regard to lot depth, side yard setback of end units, and also relief is necessary for the daily dedications. In terms of the lead. Those also substantial design waivers, the area of the Tower Street, pay for solid tree, trees, and shade facilities with a lot of property. The side walk along Bellinger and street trees along Bellinger.
Yeah, we disagree on the side yard setback, we believe they're not required, but we'll give testimony on that. I do agree, the one real variance we have is for one lot, that's Lot 1.01 for lot depth and we'll get into the testimony.
You're still seeking all the design waivers.
The design waivers, I apologize, yes.
Your map shows only one.
Yeah.
Only one waiver. Okay, Brian, for...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer to the applicant. Again, as Terry indicated, it's an application for 10 townhouse units in three separate buildings along Sims Avenue. We will get into testimony in a minute, but there's really only one variance that we were asking for and that's Lot 1.01. If you look, I'll mark it as exhibit A1. It's the lot all the way to the left. It's really because the property shores up, it's like a triangle, and it's for lot depth. Otherwise, again, we'll get into testimony as to why we don't have, we don't feel we need the variances for the lot width. But this time I'd like to swear in Brian Flannery so we can get that testimony.
That one is wider, that Lot 1.01 is wider than the rest.
It's a tri...
Yeah, how come that, Brian?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about the street, the whole street, nothing about the shul?
I do. Brian Flannery, New Jersey licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Adam indicates, I have two exhibits, A1 and A2. A2 just shows where the property is.
Where's located, Sims and where?
Sims and Bellinger. Bellinger Street's along the bottom, Sims goes up from there.
Where's the school?
You can see on the Google...
Ali, you showing it?
Yes.
And where's this property, South Street property? It's right next to it? Okay.
So in Terry's report, he indicates the variances that are required, minimum lot depth for new lot 1.01. And as Adam points out, that's a triangular lot. The lot depth that's required by ordinance is 80 feet and we have the 80 feet behind the building. We have 80 to 100 feet behind the building. It's because the lot is a triangle, when you average it out, it comes to less than 80 feet. So it's my testimony that we comply with the intent of the ordinance and it's a very large, beautiful lot. The item three in the report is the minimum side yard setback of the end units and you can see we have three buildings. The ends to the property, we have plenty of them, we comply with the ordinance. The ordinance says you're allowed to have 12 feet between buildings, which is what's there.
I didn't understand, Brian. Lot 1.01 has 80 feet behind the house?
It has a lot depth where the house is. At the southerly part of the house, the lot depth at that point is 80 feet. It's 100 feet at the other side, but because you average from 0 to 100, you get 50.
So if we were to cut off, if this property were shorter?
Yes.
You average would increase and it would actually be larger because of property...
It's a technicality resulting from a triangular shaped lot. So it certainly would be my testimony that we comply with the intent of the ordinance. It's a C2 variance, the benefits outweigh the detriment. It's a C1 variance because of a hardship, the triangular nature of the property creates that hardship.
There's no lot area variance that you're requesting on that lot, the smaller one?
No, we're not requesting any lot area variances or any density variances. That's, that's the only variance that it's our opinion that we need and we think it's a technicality because of the triangular shape of the lot. With respect to the side setback, the ordinance does allow 12 feet between the townhouse units and that's what we provided. We provided more than the 12 feet side yard setback on the ends. And the other thing that should be pointed out here, we're doing this in three buildings. We could have done it in two buildings, which wouldn't have looked as nice and had a bigger space in the middle. We think the more end units, the more openings, the 12 feet which comply with the ordinance makes more sense. The fourth item is with respect to the radial right-of-way dedication at the intersections and we're indicating we'll work that out in resolution compliance. The design waivers that are requested, most of the design waivers are for the future vacant lot. This is a property where there's a right-of-way vacation. In order for the right-of-way vacation to be included on this lot, normally it would be subdivided down the middle. The joining applicant is part of the application. We've shown their lot as part of the application and those are the frontages that we don't want to improve because we're not doing anything there now. At some point in the future, it's an undeveloped piece of property. We all know what happens with undeveloped pieces of property. They come to the planning board, zoning board, they get an approval and at that point, all those improvements would be put in. We're certainly agreeing along our frontage, we're going to be using it to do the shade trees and the curbs and the sidewalks and everything that's required. We're providing all of the parking spaces and all of the other items that are needed and the other items in Terry's report, we certainly would address as part of resolution compliance to his satisfaction.
These townhouses have basements?
Yes. With respect to the justification for the variances, the master plan of 2007 on page 35 goes into housing, it says we need housing, there's not enough, this would provide housing opportunities. Also, page 56 of that same 2007 master plan says encourage growth and development in appropriate locations, consistent with established land uses. This is consistent with this smart growth plan. It's consistent with the ordinance that was passed for, for the Oak Street 4. It's consistent with the goals of the Oak Street 4 as listed in the 2013 smart growth plan on page 15 and the municipal land use law NJAC 40 call and 55 D2. A is encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, moral and general welfare, it's my testimony, this does it. And E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population density and concentrations and it's my testimony that this does it.
Okay, there are basements in these applications?
Yes.
And how many parking spaces you are giving for each?
Four parking spaces per unit.
And they're stackable, the two and two?
Yes.
Other question?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Tower Street will be cut through later, right?
I would not expect it to be cut through, no. If you look at the development pattern in the area, I don't expect Tower Street to be cut through.
Is that the, there isn't a portion of Towers where it was vacated right at the intersection? Is that that section?
Yes.
So it physically can't go through?
Yes, it was vacated in here, so it's not going, it's not going that way. And it's vacated over here, so it...
How are you going to get out of Tower Street?
How are you going to get out of Tower Street on the other end? It doesn't go through. They'd have to go down to Bellinger. Should go full the side, so anything go there then?
No, they, they have to go down to Bellinger, and I, I don't know why it was vacated. Uh, it, it doesn't make sense.
Bellinger is right behind it.
Bellinger's down here.
Okay, but if you're, if you're on, if you're on Tower Street, and you have all them houses go on Tower Street, none of the traffic will work.
They're, they're all going to come down Sims and out to Bellinger.
Our, our houses front on Sims.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that, I realize that, but I'm, I'm thinking of, of Tower Street going through, and there should be a current sidewalk put in there.
And, and it, looking at Google Maps, you can see that what's behind us is the school.
Alan, can you show Tower Street over there?
This is Towers right here.
That's the woods along the edge of the school.
And which one's Sims?
This is Sims, this is Bellinger down here, which is in front.
Bellinger Sims.
But Towers-
Can't be open to-
Towers right in here is actually vacated at the intersection, so it's-
They, they vacated, there was a, a, a paper street in their charity pulpit, and they vacated charity pulpit along with the pieces of Towers, and, and they did that because the people on Albert Avenue did not want traffic from this area coming through. It didn't make sense from a, uh, a planning perspective, if Mr. Klein was around at the time, he would have told him that we're creating traffic problems, but he wasn't there, so nobody told him, and, and he did something to satisfy a few neighbors on Albert Street.
Doesn't make sense, we need more, more roads in this town.
Yes, yes, but, but Towers can't go anywhere. You see, the, the piece that's next to us that joins a school-
It goes to Sims.
It's going over. We, we probably would have gotten that vacated, except, as we all know, the governing body's not vacating anything till the master plan is done, and as we found out last night, getting the master plan done isn't going to be a quick task, uh, so-
Could you unvacate a road? Take it back, take back Lakewood.
I don't think they, I don't think they can unvacate it, I'm sure there's some mechanism for eminent domain.
They could condemn it to take it back.
So, so if that's, if that's available and it's not built on?
It, it's the current sitting governing body that vacated it. I doubt they're going to take, uh, at, at this point-
Everybody's entitled to make a mistake when you see, they're like, whoa, that's due pitless figure.
Uh, that, that, they, they didn't do that without somebody, because there was a lawsuit that was filed in relation to that, and, and there was a public comment from the people who didn't want it. It wasn't like it was something, it was done willy nilly and nobody knew about it. It was something that was done, uh, and, uh, it's certainly not going to be undone.
It just doesn't make sense, because the tower should be opened up to Sims. Okay, but it's vacated, all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any board members?
Um, I, I have a question.
Yeah, Ally.
I do see the neighbor standing up, but-
Ally, please.
We have clearly received a letter today from the neighbor regarding a pump station on their property and some easements that may be closing in that area. I assume that you come to some briefing and you're going to let the neighbor indicate the same?
Any objection? We, any easement that's shown up there, we are not asking for an easement on their property, um, so.
Okay.
Okay. You can open the public, you can open up-
I'm opening to the public.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Have you finished, Adam?
Yeah, I'm direct, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
All right, do you affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth?
I affirm. Brian, Brian said that the master plan two thousand and six recommends that we need more housing. I would like to ask from Brian, if the more housing the intent of the master plan was for the residents of Lakewood, or it was for the residents, like I call them the Hasidim from Brooklyn, because that's what, that's the people that are buying this humongous townhomes.
You have to speak Hasidic.
Don't have that to it. And about the vacation of the streets, this street actually was vacated a few months ago by the township committee, and when I was asking, why are you vacating this street when you're not doing it, he said, no, this is Robert Kraft's yeshiva, and because of that, we have to vacate it to help out the yeshiva. Then I find out that the whole intent from vacating the streets was to be able to push in another few townhomes. So, what I'm trying to bring out, if a yeshiva, you want to be a non-for-profit, go ahead, but the only, it seems like the only way of getting things done in Lakewood is to have a yeshiva, and then you're a powerful person, and you help out the community, and you charge a lot of tuition, and then you could do a lot of business with properties. So I think this is the only property that, the, the, the street that was vacated by the township committee because of the yeshiva, and now we're getting over here a bunch of townhomes. But now let me speak about this waiver that they're asking for the roads and sidewalks. As I see over here, this Tower Street connects over here to South, whatever that is called. So if it is connecting to a street, why do you think you don't have to develop that street? You can answer that.
I, I know I can answer it if the board wants me, so I already answered it for the board.
Okay.
I guess you aren't listening.
So this street is, this south lefty is vacated? Because it doesn't show on the map?
No, it's, it's not vacated, but it's-
Mr. Klein, finish your question, then Brian will answer.
I, this was my question.
Okay. Have you finished your testimony?
As far as this, yes. Then I have my statement, yeah.
Okay, so finish your statement.
What, I should finish my statement first, no problem. Now let me speak about the basements. I know there was a discussion before about basements, why it is, you only need four parking spots, I just want to clarify it, I'll clarify it in this application. By law, you're required to go accordingly to the R S I S. The R S I S says that if it's a separate unit, that means it's a separate apartment, you're required to give them two parking spots for the basements, not two bedrooms, two parking spots.
Which is two, which is two spaces.
What?
Which is two spaces, I think.
Two bedrooms is not two spaces, two bedrooms gets calculated on the five plus on the upstairs. If it's a separate unit, there's no two yeshivas over here. You can't say is the building department is considering separate units according to the sprinklers, but according to the engineering department, because it serves the builders, because they don't have to provide another parking spot, we don't consider it separate units. If it's two family, it's two families. So the reason for that is that when people come to apply for apartments, to do an apartment, not additional basement, to do an apartment, the building department will not give them permits because they don't have enough parking accordingly to the R S I S. So all I'm saying is, I'm not asking you not to allow basements, I'm asking you do the right thing and ask the developers to require more parking like this, the people could make it legal, because as it's done now, you're forcing people to do it illegally. Not the construction, they'll do the construction legally, they'll rent it out to a person, that is not legal. Plus, when it comes, if an applicant comes and says, there's a door to the basement, like you say, you shouldn't make doors to the addicts, if there's a door to the basement, we could assume that it's going to be a separate unit, then something should be done regarding the sprinklers, because what's happening now is because it's not being put in, therefore is the end user, I'm not talking about the applicant, he says that, Brian gets up, the applicant will follow the law. We know the applicant follows the law, the problem is, you're creating the end user not to follow the law. So I'm just mentioning this in the basement, I'll bring it up till you guys will actually correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now back to the question.
Okay, now, thank you. Okay, Brian?
As you can see on Google Earth, there's a school to the northwest. There's no purpose for that, uh, to improve that street, the access to that school, the school takes up the whole block and there's no access-
And it goes nowhere.
Correct.
But I'm seeing the road over here. My glasses is working. What is this road over here? There's a road over here, on Tower Street, this road.
South Lafayette, if you look on Google Earth, that's along the back there, and there's no reason to improve that.
But somebody's going to build eventually on this street, and it's, it's going to be required to develop that.
Somebody built on this street already.
And?
And somebody's built on this street already.
And they got waivers?
Uh, the school's going up, I, I don't think they're putting a curb and sidewalk there because it doesn't go anywhere.
So somebody got a waiver of this street?
This, this is vacated.
I understand, but the south Lafayette goes all the way up.
I, I, I don't, I didn't do the other application, so I can't tell you who got waived.
So there is an assumption that the township committee, and that's what they told me when they vacated the street, that's what they told me, that the reason why, there is a reason for vacating this, because they don't want people to coming out over here, they'd rather have them going in over here, then turning and then going out over here.
And, and instead of houses fronting and facing the school, it makes a better situation.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm trying to bring out, the township committee said that whenever the planning board-
We're blocking those, I can't see anything.
Whenever the planning board gives a waiver for streets when they was not supposed to, they will fix it up, they're taking responsibility. So all I'm saying is, if the township committee feels that this street should go through, you're creating now a situation for the township committee to have an expense, and this is not the school applicant, so we don't have to feel bad for them this time.
Okay.
Do you hear, four minutes is up.
Yeah.
Are you shutting me down?
Yes, we are.
We got your, we got your point.
I think that is not acceptable.
Oh, I heard you have to say it, you're just repeating it, so.
What am I repeating?
Okay, so just finish up, let's, let's-
I'm finishing up, I'll finish up. So basically is, if you're vacating this street over here, the township committee will be required to put it in, but then there's another issue over here, vacating this street over here, not vacating, not improving this one. Yes, it's a different, he's still asking a waiver for that. He's going to ask for a waiver for Bellinger's street, he's asking for a waiver. I know he's saying is that we're not going to improve that property, but for some reason is he's required to ask for a waiver. So you need to be on record that you have two streets over here that you're not going to require them to put in the roads, not put in the sidewalks, and this, this planning board is okay with it. The township committee instructed you guys to stop doing that because, by the end of the game is, the taxpayer are getting stuck with it because they have to improve the roads. For you, just creating a situation that you're vacating, not vacating, not improving the streets, look what happened, now he's asking, you gave him a little bit on this, and now he's asking for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next. Please state your name directly and raise your hand.
David Eisenberger.
Speak up to Mike.
David Eisenberger, Lakewood, New Jersey.
You affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, this will see.
Hi, I'm the dean of the school by next to the property, and Brian said tonight, I was listening, he spoke about educators are supposed to deal with teenagers, and they don't necessarily know about construction and development, and I'm here to say he's correct, because I attempted, when everyone's got this notice, I attempted to, uh, try to resolve a number of issues that I felt would be a very big concern to the school, try to resolve it, uh, ourselves without hiring an attorney, and, uh, they didn't get back to us, I left a message, uh, by their attorney, and no one called me back, and I realized-
When did you find out about this?
I'm sorry?
When did you get noticed?
I just found out about a week ago.
Ten days ago.
I'm sorry?
Ten days, normally you have to get noticed.
I guess still, still came to me, I tried to work it out, uh, ourselves, together with the, uh, with the developer, and, uh, we have not received-
Do you have any opposition to the way the plans are right now?
Yes, numerous concerns.
And you couldn't work it out with the-
No, so my request is that if I could just ask for a little bit more time so I could hire an attorney so that they, I could get the proper representation.
Okay, Mike, what's your recommendation?
I'm assuming that the applicant would have consent to that agreement?
Correct, just to be clear, I don't recall any messages coming to my office, if you did call, I didn't get the message, I apologize, but I've been telling you I'd never heard of anyone calling me, uh, regarding this application. That being said, you got the notice, uh, I was told there was a letter sent, Alan showed it to me an hour ago when I walked in, uh, they indicated just that they have concerns. We're here on the record, if the applicant can, and, like I said, the, the application to, what we believe, does not one small variance for lot depth, we're, otherwise we're a fully conforming application here, um, my understanding is that the neighboring property has concerns of that.
Did you speak to them?
Outside the hallway for, under the represent- That's what I'm saying, to give voice to their opinion.
Can you state your concerns? Can you state your concerns?
Again, I'm not so knowledgeable, just a little bit that I did.
Great. He's here, he's at the mic, let him state his concerns.
Oh, I agree, no, that's-
Just a little bit of homework that I did until I realized it's, uh, this is bigger than the scope of area that I, uh, claim to be an expert in, not that I claim to measure anything that follows. Um, there's a concern that the houses are coming right up to, uh, we have a pool that's a thirty by fifty five, I don't know if you can see it on, uh, Google Earth over there, and their houses are coming right up to it, and, uh, it would be a big concern about, uh, privacy for our pool that we just, uh, we just put in. Um, the, on the plans that we got, and I showed it to someone, they told me that there are easements on the, on, on our property, and that they will be used, and based on the plans that were submitted, they will be using our sewer pump station. Um, in addition, the construction of this, uh, whole project, there's only one road into Sims Avenue, which, which we paved in order to get to our school, because that is the only access at this point, um, when they start construction, that we will not have any access for our students, uh, to get to school. Um, there could be more things, I don't know, I'm requesting that I be able to have the opportunity to get a lawyer.
Okay. Mike, what do you recommend?
I can respond, I apologize, I can respond.
Okay, you can respond, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, Mike.
With regard to the pool indicated that's on the school property-
Adam, let me ask you, how far are the houses to this pool? Does Brian want to testify?
Yeah, Brian.
Brian, want to come up?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet?
We're not asking for any side yard variances.
Because he said you were building right up to the pool.
But we, we have no, speaking, the school put the pool on their property, and they didn't take into consideration that the property next door may at one point get built. We are not asking for any variances, um, for a side yard or anything like that to their property.
And you're testifying it's about eighty feet away from the pool, roughly?
To the pool? It's actually earlier.
Sorry. I swear in, yeah, I swear in Joseph Kishuma prepared the engineering plans.
You affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Joseph Kishuma, K B A Engineering Services.
Please proceed.
License, I'm just a licensed planner. Our office-
The board accepts this testimony, yes, we know.
Thank you. Uh, our office did prepare the plans for this application. Uh, what should be noted is that the pool is located, uh, to the north of our property across the Tower Street front, so their pool is actually in a front yard. Uh, we provide a front yard setback along Tower Street, which is required, uh, and conforming, so we have the fifty foot right away, uh, the twenty-five foot setback on our side, and then the pool itself, uh, I, I would have to pull out surveys and, and measure, but I would estimate it's probably thirty or forty feet away from their property line.
It's on the other side of the street?
It's on the other side of the Tower Street front, uh, Paper Street, so when you add that all together, the pool itself is probably about a hundred feet away.
Okay, no, it's on the side of the street, you can reply.
You're not asking for a front yard setback?
No.
Okay, all right, next.
And that part of Tower Street is vacant? Uh, no, that part of Tower Street is still there. So it's, uh, a buffer between our lot and theirs.
Okay, no problem.
And would-
And we're not asking for any of the easements that are indicated on the plan, on the top of their property.
There's no easement on their property?
We're not, it should, there's an easement shown, we're not asking for it.
You're removing it?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what easement was shown? I'm a, I'm a foul, yeah, but I'm a foul, I'm a foul.
I'm a foul, yeah, but I'm a foul, I'm a foul. It's like, you need an easement or you don't, so what easement was shown, I don't know what was shown.
There was a utility easement for sewer connection on their property, we can realign the sewer to connect at a different location off their property.
Okay, okay, so there's no easement, because he brought up concern about an easement and a pump station connection, so that's a moot point because you're not doing that.
We'll no longer connect to their pump station.
You're not doing that, okay.
Show me that lot that you needed that variance, is that near the school?
No, it's on this side.
Complete opposite side of the project.
The school is totally on that side.
The side of Tower Street.
So on their side next to the school, you're not asking for any variance whatsoever?
Again, the only variance we're asking for is on 1.01, that's because it's triangular shape.
I just want to put on the record, on their side...
It is the last house being built away from the next...
Next to the school, there's no variance whatsoever?
No.
Okay.
Then you brought up a concern about access during construction on Sims Avenue?
Okay.
Mr. Fenshaw, I just, because I'm familiar with the school and the phasing of the bonding for construction, because the school lot was actually created as part of the Somerset subdivision to the northern thing, my understanding, I believe, was that the school lot was originally designed to actually have an access to the north, and this portion of Sims Avenue that the applicant neighbor is concerned about being blocked off, was actually a fringe benefit for them, that they've been able to access because that northern portion of Sims hasn't been constructed yet, so I'm not even sure who really should be benefiting from this portion of Sims, I think this was built by a different developer that the school was able to take advantage of.
But to address that, people build houses on streets all the time and don't block the streets, there's no reason in the world that they would be blocking the street.
And it's illegal to block the street if they have access.
Yeah.
You'll have to conform.
And again, our testimony is that but for the lot depth, we have a fully conforming application.
Is there any on-street parking besides...
Actually, there is no construction on the opposite side of the street, so there is on-street parking for the entire length of Sims.
But somebody's going to build there eventually. On your side, is there any on-street parking or driveways take up the whole...
The driveways take up the majority, but there is that, the exceptionally wide lot, there's on-street parking there.
It's a horrible thing, four parking spots I know on-street, today I was in a street that got opened, I was off Route 88 in a cul-de-sac over there, and there were only driveways, you couldn't park any cars on the street, and it's horrible.
I believe, and I'm just, my engineer's just checking, I believe my last lot, 1.01, which is a triangular lot, because it is very, it's an oversized lot, we probably can get in some additional parking spaces that would be utilized.
What's with the trash? The trash will be...
Trash removal will be at the street, just as any other application.
Do you have room to put all the trash cans with all the driveways over there?
Yes, these lots are substantially deep, so there's no pressure to place the units very close to the driveways, there'll be plenty of room between the driveway and the unit to place the driveways.
Each unit, the lots. So we have all the garbage cans there on there?
They're all 25 feet, we do show trash locations on the plan.
I don't think you mean storage, I think you mean when you bring it out to the street or they're going to be blocking the driveways.
Right. You have four cost parking driveway with all the garbage cans over there, how are they going to pick it up and how are you going to get out?
The parking driveways are 18 feet wide, the lots are 25 feet wide, so there's seven feet on each lot.
And that's enough for them?
It is, yes.
John, are you okay with that?
It's gonna be tight, they'll work it out.
Yeah? You're okay with it?
If not...
If not, just come complain now.
Mr. Chair, is the public still open, I don't know if we have anybody else, if you want to close to the public?
I will. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard on this application?
You have any other...
I just want to say, also, the way the grading of the property is that, once they start, their houses, I mean, again, I'm not an expert, but it's much significantly higher, so their windows will be able to see right into the pool.
It's across the street.
Isn't the pool across the street?
I was there, I walked the property, stood there, so it's really, I didn't measure.
They're not asking for a variance, I feel like, they're not asking for any variance, and you cross the street, but if you put a fence on your side, they'll shade their windows, what I'm trying to tell you, they're not asking for any variance, they have a right...
100 feet away.
It's 100 feet away. I mean, they testified at least 80, I think you said, right?
At minimum 80, because of how far the pool is on their property away from the property line, but at a minimum, we're at 80, assuming they're not on their property line, it's probably close to 100 feet, if not more.
It's a boys' school, right?
Yeah.
You only have the boys' school.
No, we rented out to girls' camps.
The windows are facing those pool, the front windows are facing that?
There's nothing you can do about that.
There's nothing to do, okay?
Nothing you can do about that. Any other concerns?
Right, anything else?
You know, I'm not knowledgeable on the, I called the attorney today, three attorneys today, to be honest, and he said, you know, today is too late, I gotta come tomorrow, and...
I think like the chairman said, this is a, it's an application with virtually no variances besides for lot depth variance on the lot, which is hundreds and hundreds of feet away from your school, the pool privacy issue, I mean, the pool's like over 100 feet away, and then the easement pump station issue has gone away, so we're just trying to, I mean, we're trying to hear what the concerns are, but it seems like the concerns are not...
I don't know all the potential concerns.
The notice 10 days ago, I don't think it's fair to the applicant.
Also, just to point out, we were here two weeks ago for this application, for the meeting that there wasn't more.
I was here.
No, I said the meeting didn't have a court.
So the notice was 10 days before that meeting?
Oh, he's saying so, they had at least a month.
We were here two weeks ago.
Like he said, just got the notice 10 days ago.
The reason why I just got is because it went to Somerset, minds are in the process of subdividing over the property because it's supposed to go to the school, as per the township committee, so therefore we didn't get the notice, it only went to Somerset, and I only got it from Somerset a week ago.
Okay, but I don't think they're asking for any variances on your side, I don't think it's fair to the applicant, the only variance they have is hundreds of feet away from your property, and I think all your concerns that you know of were addressed. Okay, well, it's, we'll leave it up to our voters about, okay, thank you very much. Anybody else in the public like to be heard? Seeing no one, we'll close to the public, I'm paying a motion on this application, okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, roll call.
Mr. Grunberger?
No.
Mr. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Hipperson?
Yes.
Mr. Plankton?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Graffle?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, number five.
Number five and number...
Any more opposition? We're not finished tonight, any more opposition, the next three?
Number five and number six are kind of part of our applications, they are separate and indivisible but tied together, first is a major subdivision, and the following is a site plan on one of the subdivision lots, so there's only one plan set, but they are two separate applications that will require separate motion, you'll notice in your packet you only have one whole application. I also was advised by the applicant that they made some changes, they were requesting four duplex buildings, they reduced their unit count to three duplex buildings, and they increased the size of the proposed parking lot based on the needs of the neighbors in the area. I anticipate they'll have an exhibit to show you that explains those changes, and hopefully Mr. Pepper can indicate whether or not he still feels that the notice provided by the community back there based on the...
First, let's go to Terry, one second please.
Terry's letters...
Terry, you will help with this because we have two applications, since the site plan lot will not be created unless the subdivision is approved, I would recommend starting with the subdivision into this application, S D 2208.
2208 is the subdivision, and which one, you only have one report on it, right?
No, there's two reporters.
No, you do? Two, two, three, one, okay.
We can confirm 2208, but unfortunately, the letter that you have that Terry prepared does not reflect what the applicant is proposing now, so...
If I can just address that. Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer.
Terry, start with him.
I would let him clarify and see if you want to go first.
Okay, I usually like to have you first.
I recommend hearing this first, but what's happening is, our letter was done on four duplexes, the proposal, which the board does not have in front of them, is for a reduction of one unit to three units, which in theory is a good thing, but you don't have that in front of you, and all of the setbacks and variance conditions are going to change with our reduction in the...
Hopefully, we don't have any variance.
We have no idea.
Okay, let's hear it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, I'm the applicant, as Terry indicated, again, this does have, this was, there is two applications, one application doing the subdivision, which originally was asking for four duplexes, which would be eight units, and then creating another lot, which would have been served for a synagogue. Right now, after meeting...
Originally, it was supposed to be four duplexes plus the synagogue.
Plus the synagogue, yes.
So five lots.
I will tell you, it's a...
It was nine lots because each duplex had two lots, four duplex buildings, nine lots over there.
Correct. Again, after meeting, after our notices and after our tech hearing, we did meet with some of the neighbors, and what we did come up with, we have taken out, again, we're taking less dense, we're taking one duplex out, we are coming before the board for three duplexes, a synagogue, and we're increasing approximately 30 parking spaces for that synagogue.
Adam, let me understand this, your application basically stays the same, you're just pulling out one unit to add parking to help the neighbors?
Are you moving the other units around?
I'm sorry?
Are you moving the other units around?
No.
All the units are staying, but you pulled out one...
We're pulling one out.
One out, and in that exact area, you're putting in parking?
That is correct, and also, I just want to point out, this is not like it's a cul-de-sac where we're changing around a lot of the signs, this is a square, and it's...
You're not changing anything, you're just taking one unit to put more parking spaces.
Yes, and we have a set of plans to hand out to everybody, so the reason why I believe we struggle forward, this does not have to be, able to come out for another evening, is because we're actually reducing the variances, we're making this a better application, and it's on the same site that you were looking at originally, this is only, this would have been comments that you would have made probably to us, saying, take back, take out a unit and increase parking, and that's exactly, we read your mind, this is what we've done. So if that were...
Do you still have a variance on parking?
Parking, which would be the second application, I believe would call for...
Well, let's deal with this one first, then.
If I could just get clarifying testimony, I'm looking at the original filed plan, and I'm looking at a PDF file of what you've handed out. Looking at the property, you're keeping the three duplexes, which would still remain along the Amsterdam that way.
Correct.
What I'm looking at, it looks to be very similar, as you mentioned, you're removing one duplex building and a place, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and place of that, the place of park.
That is correct.
Now, just eyeballing this because that's all I have, the property, the duplex, in the corner of Amsterdam and Blanche Street, it looks like the unit itself is moved up further toward Amsterdam, I'm sorry, it's actually moved further back on the PDF.
Yes.
So there are minor changes, particularly with the lot that's at the corner, it looks like the building on the lot that's on the corner is going to be set back further, is that correct, from Amsterdam?
Yes, and additionally, the duplex lots have gotten larger, the initial application was 8,500 square foot lots, we have two that are 10,000 square foot lots and one that are 9,000. This was a meeting with the neighbors in the area to accommodate their concerns, so we made the, we still have the three that are fronting on Amsterdam, the one is a little setback, and all the lots are a little bigger, and 30 parking spaces are added, and for this sanctuary, we had 28 were required.
Brian, why are you making the lots a little bigger?
To make the, to satisfy what the neighbors asked for, and to provide the area that's needed for the parking, in order to get more parking and accommodate the shul that the neighbors wanted, we had to lose a lot, once we lost the lot, we made the other lots a little bigger and we shifted around a quarter.
Yes, so the other lots are made bigger because you have some extra land, not because you used in the application?
Correct, correct.
It looks like you had an important front nerd setback to Columbus Avenue before Ben Aylin for 5.8 feet.
It was certainly more than 5.8 feet.
It was more than 5 feet, and it, I should probably, I should probably get sworn in even though I always tell the truth.
He had a dimension on there. We created as a car.
Let him be sworn in.
We acted on it.
One second, Mr. Pfeffer, let's weigh on Brian, he's giving testimony.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I have the two plans here, A1 is the plan that was submitted, and I've drawn a red X through the unit that was on the corner of Blanche and Columbus, which has been eliminated, and a parking, parking has been added in that place and up to the shul. As Ally indicates, we're now asking for 5.5 feet from Columbus, where as you can see on the other one, it was closer to 10 feet.
Mr. Flannery, I think you're also asking for 22.5 feet of Blanche, is that conforming to 25 feet? I just question whether...
Did Terry see these plans at all?
No.
No, see it there. Basically, this is a school losing a lot, but it may be any changes to it.
I understand. The 22.5 was always there.
Not according to the plans that we have, so...
The plan I have in the table, it doesn't show a dimension on the plan, in the table it shows 22.5.
So again, we would like to proceed with our application, the first application creates the three duplexes and the lot for the synagogue, and then there will be a second application for that synagogue.
May I ask you a question? Those of your advertisements for the hearing, which was done more than 10 days ago, is your advertisement still valid?
Yes, again, all we have done is, and we're hoping for the board, so before the board tonight, it's still the application, which would be for the four duplexes and the synagogue, we're here before the board now saying we're going to take out a duplex, and we're going to actually improve, we had a variance, I think we only showed five or six parking spots, now we've improved it to 30 sub-parking spots, and so we are increasing and we're improving, so I'm getting rid of those variances, any other small variance that was created, I believe is covered by our catchall, and again, if somebody, you know, wanted to challenge it, it's at our own risk, I do feel that based upon the notice that was provided and the applications only, what we believe improved, has not been, we've not tried to, you know, if you were coming back and putting in a fifth duplex, I would tell you, yes, it's a different application, but because we're reducing it, I do feel confident we can go forward. Thank you.
Terry, do you feel comfortable?
I might ask the follow-up question, Brian, are the application which we've now been handing tonight, the new concept, which is less units, are you exacerbating any variances or waivers that were identified in the previous review of the original plan?
The only one I see is the one that Ally pointed out before, which would be the front setback for the shul, which I have to check if there's a dimension somewhere in a chart for what that is, it looks like it scales about 10 feet.
There's also a side setback for the shul, before it was 4.4, and is now at 5 feet where 7 is required. And I have really few these type of details comparing them now.
Mike, what's your opinion, is this a substantial change, and we have to bring back plans, can we listen to it?
I think the board can listen to the application tonight, as the chairman represents the board, they, the applicant does, and they carry some of the weight of the notice and the changes that were made to their own detriment, if that's what ends up happening. I do, I would say to you that, my suggestion is, if we're here the application, and if at the end of that, aren't comfortable with, you know, with the remnants, with the site plans, those things, then you can carry it to another night and ask for re-submissions as it relates to anything that is not clear.
Okay, thank you. Terry, do you feel comfortable, go ahead?
It's certainly up to the board, and the attorney's indicating that the elegant is subject to proceeding at risk.
We understand that.
Okay, so you're okay, 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 so proceed.
Do you want Terry to start with the notice, or would you rather Brian just go through because there is a change?
Terry, one second please.
Why don't we start with the submission waivers, and I'm going to ask Brian to clarify the...
No problem, thank you.
For the submission waivers, as indicated on the third page of our review, the waivers include... include EIS and tree protection management. If there's no environmental strength on the property, therefore, we report the EIS. With regard to tree protection management, we recommend waiver for complete recency. That, if board approval is granted, they'll have to document compliance with the pre-order.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendations?
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and is no, okay.
Right now, under zoning, I'm going to go a little bit off script here. Brian, you have a review, you're more familiar with the new law, and can you comment as you are zoning comments, and what's changed?
What's current, what's still a variance?
Well, the, the report that was submitted indicated that variances are required for minimum lot area, which were eighty-five thousand one hundred and ten to eighty-six thousand fifteen. We now have two that are ten thousand square feet that don't require a variance. So in addition to dropping a unit, we made two of the lots where no variances required, and the third one is now nine thousand square feet, which is larger than the variance that was requested. The report indicates a front yard setback is requested from Blanche Street at twenty-two point five street, twenty-two point five feet, and we're still asking for that same front yard setback. The synagogue, in the report on the subdivision, says that those variances would be dealt with separately. There was some change in them, and when we get to them, we'll do it. We are asking for one additional design waiver at this time, since we're having the parking coming off Blanche Street. We now have the shul facing Blanche Street, so that changes the fronts and the sides and the rear. So now the property line to the north would be a rear setback, and fifteen feet is required, and we're providing fifteen feet. The front setback to Columbus, we're asking for five point five feet, but we're also asking for a design waiver not to construct Columbus, because we're not doing any development along Columbus. So we would keep all the development on our property, and we would develop Blanche, and then we put a, put the radius returns there, so there would be a provision for turnaround, and a provision to extend it in the future if any future development occurred.
Blanche is a paper street now?
It's a paper street, yes, and it proceeds to the north, and there's the townhouses that front on Prospect Street, which are there, and there's a ten-foot-high retaining wall. So that street's never going through.
The block on the east side is the, right? The block here?
Yes, yeah, there, Blanche Street could go in further, and there's another block to the east that's currently wooded. But Columbus Street is never going to be a through street. That is a paper street right now, that's a dead end because of the townhouse development that's there.
Okay.
So the synagogue, we're also going to be then asking for the five point five foot front setback from the paper street, and a five foot side setback for the new proposed lot that we're doing. So there'd be no setback relief requested from the existing townhouse development to And the design waivers, as I indicated, the additional design waiver we're asking for is not improving Columbus.
Anything else in the report that's changed, that you can agree with?
No, and in the review comments, the, the road extensions on Blanche Street that were requested, we agreed to, as well as all the other comments.
And we understand that, because Terry's not having an additional review. Again, by agreeing to Terry's comments and reasonable request, we understand it might be a heightened request, and during that, we're complying, and we have no objections to that.
And as far as justification for the setback variances for the dwellings and the shul, this property's in our end zone, which allows townhouses. We'd be allowed to develop by right nine townhouses. That would be, we could do three triplexes, we're asking for three duplexes instead. So certainly, it's my testimony that this is a better zoning alternative, and the provision of the shul, which is going to serve the neighborhood of the applicant, has met with the residents in this Prospect Street area and the prospective residents in the Prospect Street area, to design a shul that will accommodate them in this area, will accommodate their families, and based on that, it's providing inherently beneficial use.
Basically, the reason why he's losing a duplex, because he wants to accommodate neighbors?
Yes.
That is correct.
And a parking.
We got, we got parking.
And parking.
Significant compared to what we're showing.
So the master plan of two thousand and seven on page thirty-five under housing says what it always does, we need more housing. Master plan of two thousand and seven on page fifty-six says what it always does, encourage growth and development based on smart growth planning principles. This is in the cross on Prospect Street four, we meet the goals and objectives of that. There was an ordinance passed twenty-fourteen DS eight, which allows duplexes on small lot sizes, if you're also allowed to do townhouses, as long as you don't exceed the density, and we're well under the density. Where a density of nine would be allowed, we're only asking for six. We were asking for eight at first, but then when we came to our senses and decided to put in parking and the shul, we reduced to six, where nine would be permitted. These are classic C2 variances, where we got to show the benefits outweigh the detriment, and it's my testimony that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and the board can grant these without any detriment to the zoning order or general.
I just want to clarify, just to make sure we put on the record, while we increased it, the lot, the one duplex, nine point oh one, nine point oh two, the lot area, we are asking for one small variance there, where it's eight thousand eight oh seven point oh four square feet, but we've still increased it compared to what it was before, and the other ones no longer need lot area variances.
Terry, may I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
There's a panhandle portion of the synagogue lot that goes along that nine point oh one, is there a reason for that? Because it seems like if you incorporated that in a nine oh one and nine oh two, you could get rid of that variance. You're a design engineer, you know. It doesn't seem like it's helping with setbacks or anything.
That's an, that's an area for the sewer and water, and if we were in the MUA area, we would be able to do that, because we could do it in an easement, because the MUA is so much nicer than New Jersey American. New Jersey American doesn't let you put in an easement.
No simple hole planned?
No simple.
But that is a separate application, we'll give all short questions then, but yes.
Any board, are there any questions on this application? Okay, seen no one, we're open to the draw.
You've affirmed the testimony, you're about to give us the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. What a hit, sir.
It's still not English.
Any other way of saying it?
Want to spell it?
He can't. Okay, next.
The applicant comes in...
Did you see it this morning?
Yeah, yes, this morning.
I did already.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Provides an application, gives in another site plan. I asked him as a member of the public, please give me a copy that you just gave the board, and the engineer refused. I guess he doesn't have more copies. So the public was not able even to look into it. And there's a lot of objectors over here, as you could hear. Why shouldn't they have the right to look into it? I'm talking first about the legal question over here. There is a law in the MLUL that ten days before the hearing, the site plans and all information has to be by the engineering department for the public to come look at.
Just one second. Anybody who was objected here, please raise your hand. Okay.
I'll try to make it fast.
No, there's a lot of objectors, I don't know if it's right to listen to the application until you make new reviewing.
I want to hear what the objectors have to say. This is, just to be clear, we've given a testimony, and we've put on the record, Mr. Clancy usually wants less density, more parking, I don't know. We had an application, we submitted to the board, and we heard comments based upon our tech hearing, based upon, we had some comments from the neighbors, and we came. I agree.
One second, one second. You'll have a chance, one second, no screaming, please.
Would I like to have the board have time to look at everything? Sure, but it's not a perfect world. We're here today, we took out everything that we think is here, we're putting the testimony on. What I'm asking here is, at this point, if, before you go ahead and just say, you know what, come back, everyone's here tonight, and everyone likes to say, oh, you pushed us off and made us sit here a whole night, so we're here, let's hear what they have to say. I don't know what, maybe their comments have then to do with this application, has to do with other stuff, I don't know, but I would at least have the public come out, hear everything, and then we can make a decision.
Thank you very much.
Now, the reason for the ten-day review is that me as a member of the public, or anybody of the public, should be able to look at the site plan they should be just submitted, what he was refusing to give to me, and to be able to comment on that. How do you respect the older members, including me, of the public to comment on that?
Okay, I would like to hear what they have to say, from the neighbors who live in the area.
Okay.
I hear you.
I just want to point out one of the things that he did, that he was not stressing even. The previous application had a paper street that he had developed over here, with sidewalks, with everything. Now, how?
Columbus?
In Columbus. How are these people supposed to go to the shul, there's no sidewalks? All these things, yes, the engineering department is reviewing the stuff and pointing them out, what waivers we need and what not. You cannot do this just by handing out, just by the, not even before, just by the planning board pointing out, giving papers, and giving them the site plan, when he's refusing to give it even to a member of the public. I think it's wrong, I think the public, you could hear the public, but I think the public has a right to see the plans ten days before at least, and be able to comment on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard on this application? Please state your name, and you have to be affirmed.
Shalom Slomowitz, seventeen Capitol Lane, directly across the proposed lot.
Okay, you have to be affirmed then.
You've affirmed the testimony, you're about to give us the truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And can you spell your name, sir?
S.L.O.M.O.B.I.T.S. Before I even say, I'd like to say, the public would like to have a clear, what variance they're going for. At this point, the change, what exactly is proposed, the north to the south, what is part of the asking, that's one thing, just, I would like some clarification.
Let me ask you, your neighbor over there?
Directly across.
Did the applicant meet you?
The applicant met the Prospect Square. Okay. Most of them, we have the Prospect Square ground here, we have the Prospect Park, the existing neighbors.
Well, everybody here is from the meeting neighbor?
Both, both, either Prospect Square, Prospect Park.
How close are you to that?
I'm directly across this thing, ever this proposed lot, I'm directly across the street from it anymore, directly going to affect me.
Okay, and what do you oppose to this?
Before even started, I'm not going to what variances, then I'll tell you what I oppose. Before even starts, we go back to the stated on the record. Before, just, when this developer was going to, for this whole project, they discussed that they should build a shul. And one of the things, Mr. Flannery, you can look into, in January fourteenth, I think it was, said it's not a problem, they're building a shul on a one-acre lot. The shul, the one-acre lot, now it's coming, the one-acre lot together with the three duplexes, and they come and say, they're righteous, they made it from eight to six. This lot was supposed to be completely as a shul with parking spaces, not a shul, supposed to be eight, made it to six, and the rightists now are changing back to six. It's supposed to be a synagogue with servicing one hundred and fifty units, which is about three hundred and thirty families. So, as much as they're trying to separate the two site plans, through this site was supposed to be the synagogue only.
He was required to give a synagogue?
Yes.
It was in the resolution?
The resolution required us to give it, correct.
Okay, Ally, is that correct? Yeah?
Yes, it was required.
Please, no, we'd like to finish nine o'clock.
It was required in one of the Prospect Square, that was attached to one or two of the Prospect Square applications, that they provide a community building within X amount of square feet, a certain amount of size, whatever.
And this was designated for the shul?
Was, I think...
This application, in my opinion, stands on its own. Whether or not it comes to meet the requirements for COs for those other subdivisions has yet to be determined, but you still need to act on this application individually, even if you build a shul that ends up not meeting those requirements while it doesn't develop without a lock, and you need to build a shul that meets the requirements.
And he's out of lock, and he will not get any COs in that application?
For those other units, but you can't deny this simply based on the fact that it's not meeting the requirements for another application.
Stands on its own merits?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just explaining why, you know, they're trying to separate the houses and the shul, it's really one, one big request.
Okay. This lot wasn't, was it subdivided?
This is, that's why there are two applications. The first application creates a subdivision, which creates the lot for the shul, and then the second application, which we haven't heard yet, is for the shul.
This subdivides it from the whole application with a hundred and forty houses, whatever?
No, this lot's in, this land stands on its own.
That's why I asked you, Ally, so this was subdivided already, this land?
This land already exists on its own.
Exists on its own, okay, stands on its own, okay. Like what you just said, that they're dividing, they're not dividing...
They're not dividing means this, this block that they're coming in for two variances should all be used for the shul, not the shul on houses.
I don't think they have a stipulator that it's going to be used only for the shul.
They stipulate they're going to have a shul.
They're going to have a shul.
Make a property, I can call it Mr. Flannery.
Okay, you just heard Ally said, if they don't meet the requirements, not any CO.
I understand, okay, I understand, you know, like you've been saying all night, you know how it works, come back later, don't want?
No problem, no problem.
As opposed, we all neighbors, this is all directly across the shul, if there's any kind of variance that they are requesting, we would like to oppose, it roaches on privacy, it roaches on our decor, and we'd like to oppose any kind of variances on this property. I do have a petition signed with quite a few neighbors.
That's hearsay, I don't think we get, Mike, I don't think we get...
You could give it another's evidence.
One second, let's hear from the attorney. I think it's hearsay.
The board can consider its deliberations.
I think John wants to stick it in the file, but it's not usually passed around to the board.
Okay, so you can give it to, you can give it to Ally, or the attorney, you can't give it to us.
Can I read it?
Cannot read it.
I read it, I read it, okay.
You can read it if it's a statement of your own, as long as it's, as long as it's your statement, and you're not saying that you can't take it on behalf of others, because you are not an attorney.
Okay, okay, I got you. So I'll hand the opposition into the...
You can say everything in your name.
We, we, the residents of Prospect Park, I, the resident of Prospect Park, would like to voice us on your position to application, SD two two eight, lot four four five, lot nine and nineteen, to build two shuls. No, now they put it all into two separate applications, it's a little difficult to concern. Basically, what he's proposing is changing the variances, going to affect the core and privacy next to our lots, and he's not going to end up not providing enough spots for the shul, which will all eventually fall out with us, and we're going to suffer the consequences.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard in this application?
You're questioning it off, or you're continuing it, it depends if I should finish my statement. You spoke already.
Let me hear it, let me hear it.
Do you raise your right hand, please? You've affirmed the testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole is simple, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Say your name.
Zeb Stern, three Capitol Lane, like with New Jersey. Also a member, I am a homeowner of Prospect Park Development, directly across from this application. Again, a lot of people came tonight, and a lot of them weren't able to sit out two hours waiting to be heard, and I'm talking myself, but there are many people in our development and community that share the same opinion here. We strongly oppose the application and all the variances. This application will benefit only the developer, and the developer only, and will cause hundreds of families to suffer. The setbacks will approach our privacy, and the reason why many of us bought here years ago when this was planned, the parking, this is obviously thirty-something spots, which they amended this application for, is grossly under what the parking should be. There's going to be approximately three hundred and thirty families, you know, praying daily at this synagogue. There's going to be approximately 330 families, you know, praying daily at this synagogue. 34, 30 parking spots is a disgrace, and we know what a parking scene looks like on every synagogue that doesn't have ample parking. There should at least be 75, and we respectfully request...
Depends how big the shule is, we have to hear the application.
Okay, but based on whatever the application is, we're talking about two synagogues that are being used constantly, not one primary and one, you know, lower density, which is what I understand has been written again, I don't know all the details, but there should be at least 75 parking spots to bring it from, the letter I got said that there was going to be seven or 13, a ridiculous, laughable number. There should definitely be at least 75 parking spots, because otherwise we're afraid that, just like the problem exists in many developments around the township, when there's not ample parking by the shule, people park by a neighbor in development and cut through. And our, it's easily, easily, our parking could become the parking lot for this shule that doesn't have ample parking. So we respectfully request that this application be denied, and let them, you know, stick to the, to the approved plan, approved plan over here. To squeeze in another few houses, whether it's six or eight, is to the detriment of everybody. Traffic, as we know, traffic is a tremendous problem in this township, and adding another six or eight houses will just exacerbate and increase that problem. And it's to nobody's benefit besides the developer. There's children, there's safety, our streets are ready, there's no ample park, you know, place to play, there's no ample park area. I believe, again, I'm asking the board, I believe that there's supposed to be 5%, you know, in any development, there's supposed to be, you know, recreational area, and based on the square footage of this proposed development, I believe there should be 90,000 square feet of open space, correct me if I'm wrong. Based on what's being proposed, that, you know, there's, that is significantly smaller than that. And again, any setbacks or any increased housing will just encroach on the privacy and quality of life for hundreds of families and hundreds of children, and benefit one and one person only, the developer.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, have a nice day.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard on this application? Please come forward.
Do you raise your hand, please? You affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Losa Wagner, 30 Capitol Lane.
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat that?
Losa Wagner.
Spell it, Ally.
Wagner, W-A-G-N-E-R.
Okay.
30 Capitol Lane, as a member of the homeowners association of Prospect Park. The applicant is presenting two applicant, applications, which each one is on its own merits, but if you don't look into the second one before, before the first one, you're basically giving away the land that, and we'll argue about the second application that is not, you want double the parking, because if you give away the land, then you don't have land to give it. So I'm asking the board to please flip the application, so we can first discuss if the board approves of the, is there enough parking for the two shules that they're building? And after that, if there's enough room with all the parking, if the board decides there isn't enough room, how are you going to rectify the situation if you already approved of the land, which is used to down, for six houses?
Okay, thank you. Ally?
Yes.
You heard what he has to say right now.
Why is the seller would you prefer to see two shules? What am I...
Two floors.
And what?
One, one second. Should we listen to the whole application, hear what the variances they're asking? He's right about it, we give the subdivision, and then they're going to come back to the next application, the subdivision is done already. So how do we work it out?
We have the property testimony on the record, you don't have to vote.
One second, just to, you know, Terry and Ally said before, we have to first take care of the subdivision.
Well, you can certainly listen to the testimony for both. I think Terry's point in his review letter was that any of the variances associated with the shule building, which are the front setback and the side setback, which are the new variances, would have to be acted upon the site plan. So you could theoretically act on a subdivision right now and ignore those two variances and move to the site plan, or take the testimony for both and just have two separate motions.
Now, Ally, I'm asking you again, this lot was designated for...
This lot was not designated for anything. This is one lot that the developer has decided to put a shule on and is hoping that that will fulfill his requirement, which has yet to be determined.
Okay.
It's not the board's obligation to make sure that this...
The other one is complying.
It has nothing to do with the other application.
It's actually two lots right now, it's two lots existing.
Who makes the discrimination, whether it conforms?
I would imagine when they go for COs, the township engineer would have to confirm that they're meeting all the requirements of their, their, you know, resolution, and one of those requirements was a specific condition that that developer would offer a community building within a certain distance and of a certain size, so he would have to check that and see.
The play area was also required?
I don't know.
Because it's tied...
Two acres.
Yeah, what?
Two acres. This application has nothing to do with that, this is an independent application. That's, we're bringing, people making comments about other applications, not referencing anything. This application stands on its own, we have no problem putting on a testimony, tabling, tabling what we've heard so far for the moment, going to the second application, which is for the synagogue, putting the testimony on, putting the proofs on, and then going back and answering all the questions at once. We have, we have no objection to that. As, as, as Brian indicated, just to jump to it for a second, there are two setback variances for the shule, and we exceed the parking requirements.
Adam?
Yes.
Would you go back?
I'd rather come back in two weeks.
I'd rather you come back in two weeks, have full plans.
Don't come back in two weeks, we need revised designs. We need revised designs, we need review.
That would be important.
There's a lot of opposition over here, and we don't have a clear picture.
I believe, there's nothing that we're going to be able to do to make the objectors happy. So I mean, that being said, we know what the variances we're asking for, we've given the board a copy, I have no problem doing it, I can renotice for the, for the next meeting in two weeks. The other board will come back, and we'll put the rest of the proofs on.
Let's hear if Terry would be...
Here, here, the concept is changed. The board, from what I'm hearing, is leaning towards not voting tonight, is what I think I'm hearing.
It's late, we'll finish.
If I'm correct, what's going to change in two weeks? If we have revised design plans, that's great, we're going to need time to review. If we don't have revised design plans, all you're doing is elect to vote, which you may want to do, but you're going to be back where we currently are doing it.
One second. When could you have redesigned plans? A meeting, you have to be sworn in?
What's the earliest you need them by?
Well, okay, we're talking for two weeks, three hours. So we're not going to talk about two weeks, okay? We're going to talk about a minimum of a month, okay? If you can get revised plans 10 days prior to the hearing, we will have reviews for the hearing.
Can I just ask, did we see, does there be a hearing on June, is that night?
My hearing, Ally, says June 6th, so our next meeting after May 23rd is June 28th.
So we're talking about over a month, six hours, I believe?
And I, I understand Terry's point, but I don't think the objectors' concern is with the design, I think the objectors' concern is with the variances, which are not going to change just because we have completed design plans, so you can kind of just bite the bullet and make this good tonight.
With the understanding that the applicant's proceeding at risk.
John, what do you recommend? You stay so quiet over here.
You've got to prepare us five foot from the front, you're like...
Right.
That's not going to work.
You recommend that we come back with full plans, you recommend we vote on tonight?
Even though it looks the same as it is tonight, then what's the sense? We could vote no tonight, let it go. You know, right now, that's, that's the way the thing works. It's not going to give us very much.
I, I would recommend, since we're here, we might as well hear the testimony. Before we start anything further, I believe I have a request to carry the last application on the agenda anyway, we might as well make that announcement so that anyone interested in that one, we move on. Is there a body still here?
He wants the question, or just because it's late?
Uh, because they shouldn't have an attorney representing them, and they forgot to bring an attorney with them?
Okay.
So the last application that we're on for tonight, application ED 2237AA for congregation Orlaxus Yahoo, which is a change of the site plan exemption, will not be heard tonight. We'll table it and advance that Tuesday night, 23rd public hearing this meeting, all 6:00 PM, no further delay.
Mr. Chair?
One second.
We would, I was just going to say, we'd agree to carry and come back, renotice, and see if we could resolve any else.
Okay, just one second.
Yeah.
One second, please. You heard Mr. Jackson, Mr. Franklin, about the variances, the five variances.
We're going to look at it. We're going to look at it, and I've heard the comment, I'm coming here, it's in the board, we will come back, we'll renotice, we're going to look at it again, see if it can be tweaked. Besides for the five foot, is there any other comments that you have that, again, as I said, for the synagogue lot, it's a two setback variances, and we exceed the parking requirement.
What's the two shule requirement?
That's not a comment from me, it's a comment from the objectors. It's one building.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's going back, we'll address...
You keep saying that you would see the parking, but it's two shules, are you...
I didn't say two shules, the objector said two shules.
Do you have...
We have one, one, it's one building?
One sanctuary?
Yes.
It's one building that they typically continue, they typically consider one floor the main sanctuary, which requires parking, and they consider the second floor a secondary space, or the women's space. And they park it for that.
And they'll try.
That's the way it's been done.
Usually couples come together. Usually couples come together.
Really?
That's to be discussed at a different meeting. And anyway, we would request that we hear the comments, we hear the board, we hear the neighbors, we're going to see what we can do to put it together and make it the best application for everybody.
And we'd like, you can sit down with the neighbors.
Yeah. I mean, we had meetings, but we will try to continue to meet.
Excuse me, do you, are these neighbors the neighbors that are planning on bringing in the synagogue, or they have their own synagogue? What?
Can I, can I, is it for McLean, is he going to answer that question?
Oh, oh.
If I guess for McLean, the applicant?
Do you raise your hand? Jack Lom.
You affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah. So originally, we had a plan that we submitted, that we keep on discussing, that the buyers in my development, who are buying by us, we said that we met them, they expressed their concerns, we were diligent when we forget where we are. I, I never, this Prospect Park, which is down below, separated by a big retaining wall on the fence, came, never reached out to me.
Not true.
Listen, I reached out...
If this is going to be a circus, we're just going to end with it, because it's not, because it's not, because it's not worth it. We're coming back anyway.
I reached out to somebody from there, who's actually, I think he sends out the emails, and he sends out all the stuff, I reached out to him. I only, I only heard back from him, I want to say Sunday, so I reached out to him over a week and a half ago, and I only just heard back from him. They, the neighbors concerned, this thing, the parking variant, that they never expressed that their number one concern from a member of their community who I did meet, from Prospect Park, was that they want a big buffer, they want the township to sell more land, they want a big buffer, shade buffer, from my development to their development. That, that's, I met, I met their buyer, I met a representative of their development, who said I can control everybody, whether it's sure or not, I have no idea. That's what happened, and that's what they want. It's a big shule, it'll benefit a lot of people.
How big is the shule?
The shule's a 5,000 square foot.
The, the main sanctuary?
Yes.
And try to get more parking spaces.
What? No, the main sanctuary is not 10,000 square feet. The, the, there's two floors, there's, there's a basement, there's a first floor, and there's a second.
I asked you, how much is the main sanctuary?
3,000, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that number, it's in the report, I don't know, it's in the report, it's in the design.
In that's out, requirement of approximately 24 parking spaces, of which we're showing 30. That being said, we're going to go, we're, we're tabling the application.
Coming back.
We're requesting for a table, we're asking for a, a new date, we will renotice, we will also take Mr. Franklin's comments, and all the neighbors' comments into effect, and we will see what we can do to make this even, even better application than was originally proposed.
Ally, should they come back to a tech meeting?
I don't know.
I'm asking.
I would recommend...
Straight to the public.
And if they're going to be providing you notice, then we can wait until you are ready, and then schedule your meeting that afternoon, June 20th in line, is a public hearing, but if you're going to be providing...
I'm providing the notice, I mean, at this point, I'm going, let's say here differently, once you get the plans, I'll confirm again with your office, otherwise we'll go through June 20th. And Terry, what's...
One second. Oh, we adjourned, get to June 20th?
If possible, get the plans a couple weeks prior.
Okay, that's, that's my, at this point, it's an emergency to carry it, I have to renotice anyway.
Why do you have to renotice?
To cover myself, once already, I'm coming in.
Oh, because you're asking for variances, you have to renotice.
I, it's better for everybody, I renotice.
Okay, no problem. Okay, no problem.
So we're just asking for a motion to carry, and I will renotice for the June 20th hearing. Yes.
We don't have to, we don't need a motion to carry it?
Yeah, you need it, just to table it. Table, that's a more motion to table.
You don't need a motion, but Ally will pencil you in for June 20th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, one second, we're not finished yet. Wait, we still have the Oak Street Development subdivision.
You're going to have to come back.
Don't wait, Mr. Franklin, please. Let's wait for two minutes, one second, Ally. Please leave quietly. Let's wait two minutes. Okay. Okay, Ally.
Gentlemen, you can't be talking to that, you can't hear up here. Oak Street Core Residential Development subdivisions, we have a number on tonight's agenda. There is a stack of plans next to Mr. Hertzill, if anyone wanted to see them, along with the review letters, however they are, all fully conforming for Carrie's review, they don't require any variances, and we leave sign requirements to the Oak Street Capitol plans.
So Terry, there are no variances, the sidewalks for all of them?
No, I mean...
On the property, frontages, yes.
Okay. And they all, no, no parking variances, any there? And they all, no, no parking variances, any there?
And the frontage, sidewalks on the frontage is what we require, am I correct? So they are...
Fully complying. Okay. Brian, you have anything?
And the applicants agreed to comply.
Okay, you have to be sworn in.
You affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do, I'm Flannery Jackson, New Jersey. Probably don't need to be sworn in, I mean, this is just informal, but they are all, as Terry indicated, conforming applications, no relief requested. All the improvements being put in, just as he already said, and the applicants agreed to comply with the laws.
The frontages to, to which street?
Well, there's, there's a lot of them, because we weren't here two weeks ago, so we have four weeks worth of them, and they're all on the roads that are being developed by the Oak Street joint venture.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Mr. Franklin? Please make it two minutes.
I don't know if I have to be sworn in, if it's administrative minor. I'm just, the chairman gives me the privilege to talk, and I thank him for that, doesn't have to.
Okay, Ally. Make it fast, please.
Just to catch what's going on over here. You guys are approving, like, in two minutes, eighty duplexes. Eighty, the number eighty, that's plus basements, we don't know if it's gonna be one or two, plus attics, but you cannot require them to put, not put this separate entrance to the attic. As far as sidewalks, as we discussed in the previous line, it's missing sidewalks, and it's missing roads on some of them. That's in the frontage of that street that was not vacated, and you guys claimed in the past, because the township ordinance was messed up, because they did one after the other, and they didn't address that, therefore, is your attorney's opinion was that you're required to give them, not even a waiver, you can't just, you're requiring them from putting in the roads and the sidewalks. I'm just mentioning this because if, in my opinion, if I would have been in your place, I would have recommended to the township committee to update their ordinance, if they made a mistake. So, again, in the past, you had ordinance that you recommended for the township, over here, you didn't, and then this eighty duplexes, plus two rentable basements, as they're advertised, plus the attics, rentable attics. When there's missing some roads and sidewalks, I'm just saying what's going on, and obviously, is he going to say yes? And have a good night, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to be heard on this? Okay, senior, we're close to the public. We have a motion on the Oak Street Corner. Anybody would like to pick a motion? No? Okay, we have the motion, we have the second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, roll call.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Penfolds.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, public portion. Brian, you don't want standing there.
Close your number.
Okay, close it, public, approval of minutes?